Good morning and welcome to a special meeting of the Stowe Water Selectment for the purpose of selecting our new police chief. With me today, I have board members Courtney Frechler, Megan Burges-Michael, Ellen Sturgis, Jim Salaby, our town administrator Denise Dampinski, and I'm Tom Ryan, the chair. First off, I'd like to thank the police chief search committee that screened over thirty candidates and ultimately provided us with three candidates that they felt were most suitable and could do the job as our next chief of police. The members of that committee were Denise, our town administrator, who chaired the committee, Zach Burns, a member at large, Tom Galvin, chief of police of the Pearl Inn PD, Megan Burges-Michael, I'm a select board, Chief Joe Landry, our fire chief, and Steve May Doe of our highway department, as well as myself. These folks put in a great deal of time and effort, presented the Board of Selectmen with the best candidates available. I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, as well as the town. As you know, we had originally planned on interviewing three candidates for this position today. However, on Thursday Edward Lee withdrew from consideration, so we will only be interviewing two candidates, Richard Briggs, whom is currently lieutenant on the Ashland PD, and Michael Solis, whom has been acting chief in Stowe for about eight months. As a piece of housekeeping today, I want to suggest that due to COVID, we all wear our face masks today, except when we are speaking, and leave it up to the candidates, whom I expect will be doing the majority of the speaking, to wear a face mask or not. Whichever is most comfortable for them, it will... Thoughts on that? Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
As for the process today... I'll then put down my face mask. As for the process today, this is an interview process that will be conducted by the board, and I do not plan on soliciting input or questions from anyone other than board members and the town administrator. At this point, we've solicited written questions from the community, received recommendations and comments from the community, copies of which we all have. For the first hour or so, we'll discuss the format and how we'll proceed with the questions, which questions we'll ask, and the order in which they will be asked. Each candidate has a one-hour interview. During which we'll be asking a series of questions relating to, but not limited to, their experience, qualifications, and thoughts on various issues. Given the time limit, I would expect each board member and our town administrator to get an opportunity to ask probably two or three questions, so just for planning purposes. While Denise will not have a vote to hire the police chief, by charter she will be making a recommendation, as well as involved in the day-to-day supervision, so I felt it was important that she have the opportunity to ask questions also. I would suggest that I start by asking the candidates to provide us with up to five minutes to tell us about themselves and their experience, and why they should be the new next police chief of Stowe. This is my first question. Denise has provided us with a template that we can use if we wish to help evaluate the candidates, but it's not blocking Stowe at this point. Anticipate after we've interviewed the candidates, we will have a discussion of the interviews and discuss our appraisal of the candidates, and after we have finished our discussion, I'll be asking Denise for her recommendation, and then we can discuss the next steps in the hiring process.
That's...today you're going to ask for her recommendation? Not until...I thought that was Tuesday.
Well, I can ask for it today if she's not prepared. You know, we can...right now, it's not set in stone. This is what I thought that the process can be, but it will be up to the board ultimately on how we end up proceeding. But those are my first thoughts, and after talking to Denise, it sounds like, you know, we're going to plan on moving the Tuesday night meeting here, so that we can have everybody present, should they so desire, you know, in person, to discuss any of the final arrangements. Based on that, what we've got is everybody's been given the list of questions from the board members, a couple of questions from the town administrator, and a list of questions from the public. We also have, I believe everybody got the original questions that were asked at the interviews. I think we can probably plan on, you know, picking anything from there. I think these are really guidelines. We've got just the latest list of questions. There are over thirty-two of them. I expect, as I said, we might get two or three, so I don't anticipate we will get anywhere near through all of the questions. As part of this, I have been through any interview with both of these candidates. If there are other board members that have specific questions they want to ask, I will actually entertain giving up my slot, so somebody else can ask something. Megan has...
Yeah, I would as well.
But, and I think I'm inclined to allow everybody to ask follow-up questions. If you raise your hand, I'll recognize you, so that we can try to, you know, just keep it orderly. But I can anticipate there being some follow-up questions that each board member might want to ask after the initial reply. So I think we can probably keep it fairly free-flowing. I don't think it has to be the same questions for everybody, but that's where I suppose I'm looking for some input from you guys on how you'd like to handle it. But those are my initial thoughts. So, thoughts from anybody, or...
I would just say that having been through the initial process, I would like to defer to the three of you to have your chance to do this. I know what questions I still would like some follow-up on, but I want to see first what the three of you are coming at this with your first set of eyes, and then maybe, you know, if you have questions about anything, Tom and I can certainly tell you what part of experience was during the process.
I would ask that you not defer too much, just because if you've got things you want to bring out that you think the rest of us should hear, I would actually like to do that.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that I understand the ground rules, because people differ on this kind of thing. I'm understanding that we're not bound by the questions on the sheet, though I like a lot. So if, for example, I have something else I want to ask about that isn't on the sheet, I should feel free to do that.
That's my feeling?
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, so I... Probably the only other thing I'm thinking of is, like I say, I'll ask the first question, you know, just to give them a chance to introduce themselves and provide some thoughts, and then probably just to keep things simple, you can just go around the circle this way, make them go next, or she can pass, and, you know, we'll just keep going around in a circle. We'll do that, and as I said, anybody who has follow-up questions, just, you know, put your hand up quick, and we'll try to accommodate.
Do you want to give them a chance at the end to, you know, anything we...
Good point.
Miss...
I had thought about that, and so I think yes, probably reserve the last five minutes itself of the interview for them to either ask, A, ask us any questions, and/or wrap-up. So I'll plan on five-minute wrap-up, and...
When we did the TA interviews, I had to remember to cover with them what the rest of the process was, like when we spent a little decision. And at that point, I didn't know, and I remember I had to say I expect that they consider either today, I think I said either today...
Thank you.
Or the next meeting. They always have that question.
I feel like the way that we had approached it last round was that each person sort of had a, like a topic that they were handling, and I think that that worked really well, because then it wasn't sort of like a piecemeal, like we were jumping from X, Y, Z, blah, blah, blah. So I asked questions about, what were my...it was, hold on, I can tell you. I had asked questions about, you know, given our current, or given our previous situation, sort of, how would you handle this if this happened again? Or not this particular situation, but a situation that required the meeting of, or required whatever, like what, how would you handle that? And so that was sort of my line of questioning, and I don't know if that's something that could help, if, because a lot of these questions sort of can be grouped together.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it makes sense to go into it sort of saying, like, this is the lean that you're going to stick in, or whatever, knowing that we can jump if you have follow-up questions, but...
Well, I think that makes sense, because I think perhaps for the candidate, then, as you said, there's a sort of a progression of topics, rather than, it may seem popcorn to them anyway, but, you know, if there's, if there's some order to the process, I think that would help me if I was in that chair.
Right.
Or in this chair.
Right. Exactly, yeah.
I agree with, I guess not sure how we're going to do...
Tom, I'm sorry to complicate you, David.
Sorry.
Glad to hear it.
I agree with Megan, you know, it might be good to try to be the topics to specific people, I'm just not quite sure how we're going to do that right now.
Well, does anyone have a specific...
If I can facilitate some of those.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So you've all received the questions that were submitted, so after looking at them, and I know, you know, Ellen had submitted some, you know, board members had submitted some, are there any that you're passionate about that you definitely want to make sure you ask that question? Why don't we start there, and then we can kind of go through, or are there questions that you don't think are necessary, or have already been asked, or let's start sort of going through the questions and figuring out what will be asked and by whom?
Can I? Sure. So I think that I would like to deal with the internal versus external candidate part of it, unless one of you had submitted that question. I know that that was a board member question, it was a...
But you can have to...
Okay. So that is something that I feel like I would like to drill down on more than I did in the, well, not that we didn't talk about it in the previous questions, but I really would like to get more of a read on what their feelings are, because I do think that that is a very important thing, that, like, that they're going to have to address, right? That's like the elephant in the room, is the external versus internal, and how you handle things. So I would like to just sort of get their take on that. So that would be my two cents that I'm gonna...
So Megan, are there specific questions? So I think two and three, and I think that three, um, three, yeah, I have two and three. And are there others throughout the rest of them that you would include in that? So...I think twenty-one...I think twenty-one could fold into that as well. Thirty-two was on that same... Yeah, and thirty-two as well, yeah. So I'm happy to take that.
Mine. Anyone have comments on that, on those questions that will be asked?
Two, three, thirty-one, thirty-two.
Two, three, twenty-one, and thirty-two.
Thirty-two strikes me as a question that's better for the selectmen than for the candidates.
No, I see. Say that, I'm sorry, do you have to say that again?
Thirty-two strikes me as a question that's better for the selectmen, as the appointing authority, than for the candidate. It seems to put the candidate...
Well, right, because, yes.
It's a question for the person making the appointment, not the person seeking the appointment. But, I mean, I certainly agree with the intent.
Because obviously, the external candidate is going to say that they think that a first step is important, and the internal would say...
But it's in the same...
Yeah.
I think it's interesting, we all have it, and I think it's...
Right. It's more of a question that each of us has to wrestle with, perhaps even address in public, but to ask the candidate to come out and talk about it...
Right.
I don't know that that's necessarily fair. The others, I certainly, I agree. I have my own questions on the internal, external thing, they're similar to, I guess, while I have the floor. I liked ten. If anybody asked that, you know, I'm not deciding on asking, if anybody asked it other than me, I think you want to phrase it as a situation where the person was reported to be doing those things. Asking about the situation where they are, we actually see them doing those things is an easy answer.
Right.
It's harder when they're just being reported.
Yep.
I just want to tell you, you know, I, unlike the town administrator job, the town administrator job, I had a fairly good idea what encompassed. I had been a selectman for over ten years, or I guess ten years, and I could evaluate the management aspects of it better. This one, I don't really, I don't believe I'm an expert on being a police chief. I'm going to avoid questions that are about the actual management of the department, just personally, because I don't know that I could evaluate a good answer from a bad answer. I'm going to focus on interactions with the public, dealing with style and philosophy, and dealing with difficult situations, internal and external, you know, meaning personnel and everything else. Though I do, I do play out, ask you four.
Four questions and number four?
Number four. Eighteen was a very good aspect. I hope that's clear. You know, I'm staying away from processes.
Can I speak to that, because that is one of the discussions that was very, that we had a lot of, right? So I think what is important to me is not just that you are a good cop, but that you can be a good leader of the police force, right? And so I do think that I'm looking to see how that person can lead. It's not the same as being an amazing, you know, person in the community, because that's not necessarily your job anymore. Your job is to be the leader of the police force, and so I think that that's what I really struggled with through this process, because I, it's, it's one thing to be doing the on-the-ground, day-to-day stuff and be really good at it. It's just that next little bit, right? To be the person who then leads and inspires and is able to do that. And so that's what I really felt like what I was looking for, and what I'm still looking for, right? I had my first round of questions, and I keep asking those questions, see if those, if those things change, but I do think that that's, that's how I went into the process too, you know? Because I think that's important, and I think it's especially important, given what has just happened with the entire department. You need to have somebody there who's able to do that, and I want to hear from these candidates how they are going to be able to do that. If that makes sense.
I have a different perspective on that.
Okay.
Largely, in, partially, largely because of the events of the past year, I think how, how the chief deals with the public is very important. How that person reintroduces the role of police chief to this community is very important, as are the other things you mentioned, but I think right now, those other things are right up there. I also, in my head, have this idea that there are certain skills, that even if you don't have them, you can learn them, or they will come with time, and then there are other skills or characteristics of an individual that come from the heart, and you will, you either have it or you don't. I think we're, oddly, I think we're coming from the same place.
Oh, I think we are.
Just diverging into different conclusions on it.
So it kind of sounds to me like you might be talking about the difference between being, not being a manager, and being a manager, and how the candidate feels about...
Yep.
What those two jobs, how they would inhabit one or the other position. And I think what I'm, I find really important is, is how the force interacts with the community. And so, you know, how we, I, for me, the balance is throughout our town government, how we hold the line in a, in a way that is appropriate to the tone of our community, whatever we think that is. So how we, how we essentially hold the line with kindness is the way I see it. So I want to find out how, how the person, our chief, is going to lead the force to do that. You know, how they're going to create a culture of whatever it is that makes that work, whether it's, you know, being appropriately interactive on, on issues of diversity, or, or issues where individuals have, have personal problems which, which create problems with the community. I mean, it's, it's a lot about compassion and support, as much as, you know, taking the, taking the nightstick out and knocking somebody over the side of the head, so I, you know, that's what I'm looking for, is the style.
And I think then how that person then trickles down to the rest of the force, right?
Absolutely.
So I think that that is something...
Yeah, I mean, you can be a great, a great guy...
Right.
And not be able to set the culture in the station, and so it's about getting that culture to permeate.
Yep.
That's what I'm looking for, so I don't...
Can we get back to the specific questions?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I would like to, sort of, the theme for me is community policing, because I, it's sort of to what Jim was saying, you know, I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I have the same definition that is commonly used, but so there was three questions I think are tied to community policing, which is fourteen, twenty-five, and twenty-six. And if that's not, basically, and I don't like the specific language in these questions necessarily, but the idea of, because Stowe is not an urban community, we have, we, we avoid some of the issues that, that get most noted, but, you know, what's sort of, what's the perception or plan, you know, dealing with different parts of our community, basically, you know? How do you treat youth in, in the context of Stowe, as opposed to, you know, I mean, we're not, I mean, maybe we have break-ins, but it's, anyway, I just, I would love to just sort of, I'm not, I'm going to have to work on the specific questions, but that's...
Do you think five would work for you as well, then? Because I feel like that sort of is...
Well, I wasn't sure if that, I mean, that gets into the whole larger issue of, you know, the George Floyd question, the, it's, that's more about bias specifically? I don't know, I mean, that's, I don't know where the line is.
Well, and I do feel like we are going to need to talk about that and figure out who, like, who's going to ask the questions about bias, just because...
I will. There you go.
Yeah, I do, the community is changing, you know? It's not the same community that it was ten, fifteen years ago. So I do think that it's important to address those concerns as well, because I do think that, yeah, it's changing, and so...
Well, and so I think I would modify that question to be individual, you know, I can just say different individuals regarding interactions, you know, so that, because it's about diversity, it's not about...
Yeah, I think you have to say different, I think it's just individuals, right?
Who have concern, sure.
Yep.
And so Courtney, what other questions do you feel sort of follow along that line that you'd like to ask? I know there's a specific one about the George Floyd stuff.
Yeah, and again, I think I'd rather keep it, I'd rather be inclusive about bias. Close about everything.
So you would deal with, like...
So maybe nine, you know, I mean, things, you know, I think, I see mental health, and so I'll say that one, and I'm sorry, I'm not as on top of the...
Yeah, seventeen and eighteen are both around mental health.
Yeah, so probably one of those.
Jim wanted to do... So Jim's joining, Jim, do you want to look at seventeen and see if that falls in line with what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that one table.
Which one did you say I'm doing?
So you asked to do eighteen, do you want to do seventeen or incorporate those two into one question, maybe?
Yeah, I'll incorporate them into one question.
Courtney, which one do you... Do you think thirteen is, I mean, I feel like that's a question that is useful to ask, and it could be around any of this, as far as I'm concerned, too.
Yep, I think that's a good one.
You know, twelve and thirteen, all speak for, how's that? And do some of those.
Twelve and thirteen?
Yeah, so that's four, and I might have to do one more.
But they combined, I mean...
Yep.
Well, I think they, they're going to have to be kindly combined, because whenever they get...
No, right, but I think there's, I mean, because especially in the community questions, there's a lot of the...
Sometimes it can be follow-ups on it, but like, if they don't get to what else you want to ask, just naturally. I think for my, I could probably bolt twenty-eight into mine as well, just because I think that that's naturally... Denise, given the fact that they already, both of them had talked about accreditation, we're not going to bring that one up?
No, I would assume in their responses, they will bring up accreditation, but I don't know that you need to focus on it here. They've both expressed interest in getting the department accredited, so...
I liked, I liked thirty-six, although there are, there are too many questions in that one, but I...
I like that one a lot.
That's his...
I think that folds nicely into your first thirty days, and then, you know, he could add a year or five years, whatever, what's your plan?
Am I doing first thirty days?
No, yes, yes you are. It's my first thirty to sixty days, that's question four.
So I didn't mean to say I was assigning myself, and you should count on me to, I'm just pointing out questions I like.
Oh, okay.
It's too late now.
Too late.
It's on tape.
Because I like to freestyle, but I do like thirty-six, though I would shorten it up. I actually was looking at that one, too, and I figured just after the second question mark, it would probably be adequate.
But I love the idea of asking about, like, you know, a year from now, what, what will you be most proud of, or what, what will you see has changed? I think that's a great way to get them to focus there, because even thirty days... Because even 30 days sometimes is, I mean, what are you supposed to say? Well, I'm going to be with everybody. Yeah, of course you want to be. You know, I mean, or, you know.
Yeah.
That's my favorite question, actually, of the whole list.
The 30s.
The number 36, it took to be.
Yeah.
See, look, I already highlighted.
Yeah, there you go. I had a little bubble around.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm good with Jim asking that. 36, putting that on Jim.
So Tom, do you have questions you want to ask from this list?
Oh, Jim just stole.
You can have it, because like I said, I'm just.
I want to.
One of my other ones.
What did I take for you? Did I take your 28?
21.
No, I don't have myself on it. You can do this.
Yeah, you do.
Look, I have 21.
Yeah.
Sorry. I just circled.
What's that game you know?
No, I'm, you know.
So here's my procedural question. Now that we have, we're not going to each take like 15 minutes and just ask whatever. It's like one question. If you have a follow-up, pass it on to somebody else. Because then that's popcorn-ing it a bit, too. So I don't know if it's like, I want to ask my question, we're going to stay in this lane for a little while, and then it would pop over to Courtney, and then Courtney sort of asks all the. Like, does that work for people or do you really just want to sort of be rapid firing?
Can I? So when we did the town administrator, which I'm just throwing out, that would be all an end result, but it did work. We went one by one. Everybody asked one question. Kind of understood, though, that there might be a quick follow-up.
Okay.
Some people, I'm not going to say who, would do, like, push it to a third follow-up.
Okay.
The rest of us would start getting antsy when they did that because it's eating in our time. So I would say one question, quick follow-up, especially when they avoided your question or didn't quite give you.
Gotcha.
And then let them all pass. That's just my suggestion.
Denise has the person who was on the receiving end of these questions. Did you think that worked?
I do. I mean, I think you have a lot of questions here that you intend to ask this morning. So I think it may need to be that, you know, your question incorporates pieces of maybe three of the ones that you want to ask.
Yeah, yeah.
So that it's really one larger question with follow-up questions. But I did like that because it gave me an opportunity to look at every board member, you know, interact one-on-one with the board members. I just want to make sure that everybody has time to go through and at least ask one, and then as time allows. We do have, so the interviews are scheduled an hour and 15 minutes apart. So I don't know that we'll need much time between the first one and the second one. So you may take, you know, we may go an hour, and I'd say, all right, your hour's up, and then you allow for some questions from the applicants so that you're not, we're not only 45 minutes in that question. That'll give a little more time.
Yeah.
But I think it's nice to have sort of, you know, maybe not rapid rounds, but it's nice to have some engagement individually with the board members.
The one thing I want to add to that, that just came back to me. Some candidates, like Denise, had fairly brief and focused answers. So we made it through, I think with Denise, we made it through four rounds.
Yeah, yeah.
And other candidates had far less brief answers. And there was one candidate, I don't, I think I asked one question.
Yeah, I remember that.
Except as chair, I did sort of seize the opportunity to do what I wanted to do. But I was shocked at how different it was.
Denise, and what questions are you going to have?
So I'm not going to, I mean, I'll ask, I do have some questions on the police reform that I'll ask. But I will only ask if time allows or if I have a follow-up question. This is your round. I want to defer to all of you to make sure your questions are asked.
All right, so as I'm going around, do I just ask you? And you can gauge where we are in it?
No, I mean, I think if I have a question, I'll ask if I can ask a question, depending on how time allows. But I'd really rather have, make sure you're all comfortable with the questions you're answering or you're asking. And then maybe at the end I'll ask mine, depending on more time.
Yes. No, I was just planning on going around in a circle. And what I'll do is I'll call on you, and if you want, you can pass at the time. How's that? That way it's, you know, the other thing, too, is that'll give you, that'll allow you, if you see something that either, or hear something that jumps out at you, it'll give you an opportunity to weigh in on pretty much anything, you know? And you can drill further down, a little further down, or you can just pass.
Okay.
So since we have a few minutes, we seem to, could I please be clear about the questions that you all seem to think up inside from my indiscreet remarks? I have four, which kind of goes with 36. 17 and 18, would you get combined? And that's about it.
And you mentioned 10.
I mentioned 10.
In phrasing 10.
But didn't we, is 10 sort of into what Courtney was going to be talking about?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Then I would not do 10. Fine, great, thank you.
So is there any that we're missing?
Feel free to do 10 and cross through the cracks. Feel free to do 10 and cross through the cracks if we're asking.
I'm just concerned we're not going to have enough chances to ask questions to hit the stuff that we've all done assigned, plus stuff that just sporadically comes out.
Well, I have three, and I'm combining it into one primary one with a possible follow-up.
Right, same.
So I don't think we're going to be that overwhelmed.
Yeah, and two and three for me, granted, one is for one of the candidates and one is for the other one because there are two completely different questions.
Right.
So, yeah, I think.
I really just have two. That's fine, I'm not good.
Yeah. I think as long as they have a chance to talk, and I think if we can leave time, Tom, at the end, I think what works is any questions that they have for us as a board. Granted, they're going to have, when is this going to happen? But it would be nice to hear if we haven't covered something in our questions and in the last round of interviews that they feel like they want. And if it's questions for us or sort of a wrap-up closing statement.
And that's what I put down, is I'm planning on allowing a, you know, a five-minute wrap-up.
Perfect.
You know, if we go right up to their hour, you know, we do have the 15 minutes in between so that we can have a little bit of a buffer.
Yeah.
And if we get done a little earlier, that's fine, too. And we'll go from there. And what I'll do is I'll, I'm just going, you know, to forestall the question just before I give them the wrap-up so that they're not asking it. I'll just say that we're planning on making a decision either today or on Tuesday.
Okay.
What is post for? Is that the?
It is the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission. It's now the new entity that will oversee all municipal, state resources.
It's different from.
Standards and training?
Yeah.
Or is that the same?
It's all the same, but that's definitely, so I specifically put the acronym. See how much they read off here.
Because I had had that question, too. And so I actually, I mean, I love, because you probably have read it more carefully than I have, but I would love to hear for that very reason.
Can I ask a question? Do we want to allow for any community input after?
I say not today.
No, not today. I mean, like, do we want to, are we going to make our decision today or do we want to allow for community input so that we can make our decision on Tuesday?
That's probably what we'll end up discussing after we do the interview.
Okay.
It is on both agendas. So if you want to make a decision today, it's on your agenda, but it's also on your agenda.
It's also on the Tuesday agenda, okay, excellent.
And then, it's a little odd with Zoom, but can they be on the Zoom call? I mean, they're going to be watching the other person interview?
Did you?
That's a bit weird.
Did you watch the other interview? No?
I actually never went back to watch the other interviews. My feeling was if I was not chosen, I would watch them to see, you know, why they were chosen. But I did not want to.
Other candidates.
Did they?
Yep.
Really?
Yep.
Yeah, one candidate was parked in the parking lot, watching it on, I don't want to use the gender, phone. Their phone.
It's a little unfair for the, that the first candidate, you know, won't be able to respond to the second candidate's interview and the second candidate can't. I mean, I would have asked them to not be, to watch it live.
I agree with you. It's mark and parcel of the open meeting law. I mean, I have said.
Well, oh, yeah, that's right. But it's different if they would have been in the room in the past, you know? So they really weren't, they wouldn't have been in the room.
They wouldn't have been, right? Because it was diff, because you got, well, I don't know, because it was COVID when you were interviewing.
It was COVID.
Right, when you were interviewing, right.
So I think when we interviewed for the selection group for the town administrator, some of the applicants were in the room during the process of interviews of other applicants for that committee. So.
Oh, for the committee?
Open meeting, anybody come into the.
But it's really different, committee members versus candidates. I mean, when do you ever go into an interview while someone is competing for the same job? You don't usually.
I have my own personal ethics about a whole bunch of stuff that I don't know everybody else falls. I don't believe it's disgusting, which is, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's just very old school over here. But yes.
You can't do anything, you can't do anything about it. When I've done public interviews in other contexts, I've sometimes said, although you have the right to be there, obviously courtesy will dictate that we have a waiting room. But that was pre-COVID.
Right.
And then you can kind of evaluate on whether they take your hint.
So I can tell you, I mean, I can see the people have logged on. I mean, there are handful of just iPhone, but no one has a name that would be either of the candidates. So at least as of this point.
So just so I've got it straight right now, Megan, it looks like you're doing 2, 3, 21, 32, 28?
Yeah, I, yeah, I can do, well, yeah.
You know, and you are going to combine them and rework them?
Yeah, well.
Or?
Yes, I think that, I think that some of these questions, I hope that they proactively give the answers to so I don't have to ask the question. But those are the ones that I.
Yep. And then Jim, I know I probably missed one. 17, 18, 36, four?
Yeah, I'm really going to combine those two.
Right. Helen, I have 25, 26.
14.
14, 25, and 26. Courtney. I think I have 12, 13.
Five and nine.
And 10 from the left?
Possibly 10, so you know, roll a bunch of that together.
I do feel like 10 covers the leadership role.
Yeah, you want to take it?
No.
Are you saying?
No, because I feel like, I feel like that was an important one to hit on because I think that I want to know how they are going to potentially reprimand or like how they are going to take care of that situation.
Yeah.
Or not, or not take care of that situation, given, like, you know, I just, I would like to see how they answer that question.
I think I might just ask, ask 10, 12, and 13 all at once.
Okay.
When the candidate answers that question, I hope we all keep in mind that it's a union environment.
It's a what, a union?
A union environment with the procedural stuff that you just can't avoid. That being said, I think you can learn a lot from the answer, particularly if it's of a certain nature.
Right.
But just keep in mind.
Right. That they have to.
They, to some extent, they have less discretion about how they can.
Based on that, there doesn't seem much left for me. So I'll just ask the first question. And if anything comes to me, I may go rogue if that's okay with you.
Yes.
Or I'll pass to you guys.
Well, you'll do the X here, right?
And I'll do the, I'll do the N. Because I think, you know, other than that, we're pretty well covered on everything that wanted to get asked. So I don't have any particular need to hear what else comes. Like I said, I think everybody's good with, you know, answer the question. If any of you guys have follow-up, just so indicate. I'll try to, I'll try to make sure I catch it if not, you know, if we're amongst friends, go rogue, ask the question. But I will try to keep it moving so that we don't get bogged down on any one subject for more than a couple of minutes.
So can I ask, Tom, if you ask the first question, are you going to go to Megan next and keep it flowing?
Yeah, you can just go around in circles. And then I'll call on you if you've got something you want to bring up, either the two questions that you specifically have or anything else. But I think other than that, we've pretty much got everybody else covered. I have heard from both the candidate and the board. So anybody have any particular thoughts on the candidate evaluation form that Denise provided us? I may go through it, but I don't think it's, I don't think we actually need to provide a numerical rate. It just may be helpful.
Yeah, I asked Denise earlier if this becomes part of public record as opposed to just a worksheet.
And I need to.
So I said to you, I'm not sure. They're not filed for my interview, so I assume the board members probably just took them home. You used it for your own discussion and for your own evaluation. If you want to hand them in, I can certainly keep them with the packet, but they were not on file for my.
I think the understanding in your, that is still correct, is that you can use it if you wanted to or not use it if you don't want to. I want, me, I want to not use a formal form. I just went based on my notes. I honest to God don't know whether, I would assume if they get turned in, that for the successful candidate, they become part of that individual's personnel file and therefore not public record, but that individual can see them. For the other person, I would assume if they get turned in, they become documents pertaining to a specifically named individual, also not a public record, but that could be overcome. I don't know if I'm going to use it or not. In this particular post, I feel like I need to behave a little bit more, like I said before. But I intend, if I use it, I'm going to turn it in and assume it's public record. Assume somebody's going to see it.
Right, right. Yeah.
This, just, this is not in that topic. I just, it just struck me, if we, what, how do you want to handle it? Say Megan asks a question, and I have a follow-up to her question. Should I wait?
No, just, if you have a follow-up that's directly related to it, that's where I was saying.
Oh, that's, okay.
If any of the board members have a follow-up that they want to ask, you know, just, like I said, either go rogue and ask it or, you know, preferably try to get my attention and make, you know. I can see these three guys over here, fine, but, you know.
I mean, I'm really shy about this.
It's a tennis match.
We know. If you want, I can give you some of this paper. You can just throw it out.
A different one or no?
So I want to remind you, Mr. Chair, after years, you shied at me because I didn't call on you enough because you were always so polite.
See, it's not easy.
I know, I know. Especially since I was usually sitting on your bad side.
Right.
Hey, Jim?
You ignored me again.
Not intentional.
Yeah. I, I actually asked him after one meeting and he was mad at me for some reason.
I just never heard you, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, say something.
Next time, just poke me. So, but, yes, you know, I, I think the, the idea is for everybody to get their questions answered. And so if, you know, something comes up, I, I will take a look around before I go on, move on to the next question, to make sure that nobody's got a burning desire to say anything. But if, if I forget, you just yell at me. Or, or, or just speak up, I'll say. Other than that, I think, does everybody feel fairly comfortable with the process?
Yeah.
How we're going to do it? And that's good. In that case, anybody want to either kind of adjourn, not adjourn, but-
Resess?
Resess until ten fifteen?
Ten fifteen. And then people can look at their questions, figure out how they're going to reword them and stuff like that, if there's any kind of work left in play.
Great.
Oh, thank you. I think, I think I'm fine.
Resess till, I'll say ten past. We can start five minutes before, that way we can get everything set up.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have to do-
Good job.
Do you want some water?
No, I'm good right now. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you, though.
Watch your step right there.
Welcome back to the January ninth Spec Board of Selecting meeting for the purpose of selecting the new police chief. Just to recap, we've been in such, we've just coming back from a recess where we discussed questions beforehand. With me today, I have board members Courtney Fresham, Megan Burks-McMichael, Ellen Sturgis, Jim Salvi, our town administrator, Denise Demkowsky, and I'm the chair, Tom Ryan. We also right now have Lieutenant Richard Briggs with us, who will be our first candidate. The first part is that we have previously, Richard, discussed mask policy. What we'll do is only the board members or the town administrator that are actually speaking will be allowed to take off their masks. You, because we expect you to be doing most of the talking and to make sure that we can have you heard, you can either leave your mask on or take it off at your option. For the process today, what we've got is we plan on an hour of interviews for you. I'll start off, then we will be going around in a circle, asking questions. Any of the board members that want to follow up, I will recognize to follow up on the questions. I'll be asking the first question, basically allowing you to give a recap. And then at the end of the process, what we will do is have a, about a five-minute recap, where you can recap and ask any questions that you might have. I think that that's most of it. And what we're, I'll say, as far as the end of the process, we're planning on discussing the candidates today. I think you probably know that there are only two candidates at this point. And we'll be discussing the candidates and making a decision either today or on Tuesday. So, to start the process off, unless there are any questions from the board, Richard, why don't you give us, you know, about a five-minute introduction to yourself, anything that you might want to bring up that hasn't been provided in your resume, things like that, as well as why you would like to be chief of police in Stowe?
Sure. So, first and foremost, thanks for having me. Again, I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm excited to be here. My name's Richard Briggs. I'm forty-eight years old. I live in the town of Medway, Massachusetts. Been there for about sixteen years now. And I currently, well, I've been a police officer for about twenty-six years now, for about twenty-six years. The last twenty have been in the town of Ashland, where I worked my way up the ranks from patrol officer to sergeant to lieutenant, and then the executive officer of the department about six years ago now. As the executive officer, I'm second in charge of the police department. I oversee the day-to-day operations of the police department. I work hand-in-hand, side-by-side with the chief of police every single day to make that happen. I assist him with, you know, budget preparation, analysis, managing the budget on an ongoing basis. I am in charge of implementation, development of policies and procedures for the department. In the same token, I'm also the internal affairs investigator for the department. So I investigate or look into any allegations of misconduct, criminal, criminal conductings of that nature. I, I oversee, and I'm just touching on, you know, some of my things, I'm not going to go over them all, but, you know, some of the responsibilities, I oversee our animal control department, which is a regional initiative with the, with the surrounding town. So I oversee that as well, the budgeting, the training, the, you know, documentation, things of that nature. I'm also in charge of our social media initiative in the department. I'm the public information, one of the public information officers in the department. So I created a social media platform several years ago, and I was promoted to kind of build the reputation of the department and to maintain that reputation as well and to, you know, to, to sort of celebrate our little successes here and there that aren't necessarily newsworthy in terms of the local paper or the, or the mainstream media. Prior to Ashland, I was a police officer with the town of Dover, Massachusetts, which is a, which is a small bedroom community. And prior to that, I was a police officer at Northeastern University in Boston. And prior to that, I was a police officer at Babson College at Wellesley. So I've, I've had, I've been very fortunate to have a pretty diverse career in terms of departments and communities I've worked in. In addition to Ashland, I'm a member of FEMA disaster response team based out of Beverly, Massachusetts. And I'm a canine search specialist or canine handler on that team as well. I've been there for about almost six years now. In terms of my education, I have a associate's and a bachelor's in criminal justice and law enforcement. I have a master's degree in public administration. And I have a second master's degree in, from, both from Framingham State. My second master's is in counseling psychology. And I've also completed a public safety leadership and management certificate program through Suffolk University. In addition to the Ashland Police Department, I work part-time at the Onsite Academy in Westminster, Massachusetts, which is a residential, an outpatient treatment facility for first responders suffering from stress-related disorders, critical incident stress, and substance abuse issues. And finally, I'm also a member of one of the state's critical incident stress management teams, the District 14 team, which happens to serve the town of Stowe as well. So, that's a little snapshot of me. You know, like I said, I'm not going to go over everything on my resume unless you want me to, but for the sake of time, that's just a snapshot.
Great.
Megan?
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Nice to see you again. Nice to see you again. I have a couple of questions for you to start with. How would you address the concern slash hesitation of the current police force community, police force and community, to an external candidate slash outsider being hired as the chief? Additionally, how would you address those same concerns to the community?
Well, I think, I think it's, it'll be important for me to build relationships and build the trust of, of the department and the community coming from the outside. And that's not going to happen overnight, obviously. So I think it's, in terms of the department itself, I think it's about, you know, relationship building. It's about getting to know the department members, the issues within the department, you know, within the, within the four walls. And again, building those relationships, getting to know them personally on a personal level, getting to know them on a, on a professional level, their interests, their, you know, the things they want to do, the things they'd be interested in, in growing within the department. But I, I think really it's about relationship building. And I think it's the same with the community. I think it would be important for me to be highly visible within the community. Not just at the beginning, but throughout, throughout my career. And that, that's a reality. And I think the police chief is one of the most important positions in any community. You know, the police chief's got the ability, the authority to take someone's freedom, take someone's life. And I think they need to, they need to be visible. They need to have the trust of the community. And I think it's about relationship building within the community and community engagement. It's really what it boils down to. It's finding out and giving the community and the department members a voice and finding out what their concerns are, finding out more about them.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yep.
Okay. So how have you done that in other communities?
Well, the community I'm in now, I've been there for twenty years. But when I worked in the, the town of Dover, for example, I came from the outside. And, and the town of Dover was very similar in size and, and structure as this community in terms of, you know, a very low crime rate. So it gave us a lot of time to build relationships, to go out and engage the community, to, to initiate programs that are sort of non-enforcement, right, non-enforcement related, community initiatives, like education programs, outreach programs, things of that nature. But I think, you know, I think it's as simple as, you know, going down to the Stowe Cafe or MS Cafe and having coffee in the morning and meeting the people that go there. Because this is a small, knit community. It's a very family oriented. Everybody seems to know each other. And, and, you know, that's one of the things I like about it. It's one of the things that attracts me to it. But, you know, I need to immerse myself into that.
Right now, anybody else? Courtney?
Good morning.
Good morning.
That feels better. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Brad.
So, I would like to know what accountability in policing looks like to you? And how would you address the concerns of individuals regarding interactions with the police or with the department in terms of policies and national events and perceived bias? So, and in what ways have you supported conversations around diversity?
Diversity is, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So it's kind of a big, a big question because I see diversity issues as being related to accountability in that, in the department's behavior. And so, maybe what I'll ask you is just to tell me a little about your philosophy around all of that.
So I think, I think in terms of accountability, I think it's, it's, I think it's essential to build a organizational culture of transparency and accountability as well. What I mean by that is, you know, I think it's important to, and I, I won't pretend to know what the policy and procedures look like within the department right now, but I think it's important to review those policies and procedures to implement evidence-based policies, procedures, best policing practices within the department. And I think it's important to, I think it's important to, in terms of transparency, perhaps post those on, you know, a website, some of the more important policies and procedures anyways, like implicit bias, bias-free policing, use of force, you know, the list goes on, pursuit, the pursuit policy. And to post those, you know, on, in an open forum on a, on a website, you know, the police department's website where people have access to that. Because that, that assists us with transparency, right? And then I think training is very important. Training to those policies, but training to other, you know, in, in two or three years down the road, there's always, there's always a new topic that comes up. There's always a new issue, I guess, in policing. It's constantly changing. So it used to be community policing, you know, and that kind of thing. Now it's, you know, it's bias-free policing and, and rightfully so. So I think it's, it's about training the officers and the, all the department members in, in that create that organizational, their organizational culture of transparency and accountability. And then effective supervision, I think, is important. Without effective supervision, you really don't have anything. You've got to make sure people are abiding by these rules and regulations that you set forth and put into place. So, and you need to have discipline and accountability. If someone doesn't follow those rules and regulations, if someone's not adhering to those, then there needs to be accountability for that in terms of discipline. And along the same lines, you know, it's, you know, we, we need to reward good work as well for people that are following those, those guidelines.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So, all right.
Ellen?
If I could just follow up. I guess one of the ways I hear that question is around, you know, even though we're a pretty white community, pretty affluent, there's certainly a heightened awareness given what's been happening this year. And I guess especially, and I don't think Ashland's that different, probably more diverse than Stowe, but what are your thoughts about how you sort of address the concerns? It's not about specific incidents, but just that, that this larger conversation about police departments and accountability?
So I, I think, again, it's about engaging the community and finding out what their concerns are. I mean, yet the community's predominantly white, so is Ashland. It's predominantly white. But we have a large Brazilian population as well within the organization, I mean, within the community. And I'm sure this is no different. You're not that far from Framingham, you're not that far from our world, where they have large populations like, you know, Brazilians and Guatemalan population. So I'm sure, you know, you're seeing some of their residents coming through our town, working in this town, you know, that kind of thing. And I'm sure the police officers are interacting with it. I think in terms of diversity, it's about training, obviously. It's about creating that culture, like I mentioned, bias-free policing. It's, you know, it's, it's a hot topic, but it's really a philosophy that needs to be adopted and not just talked about, right? So I think, I, I think it's about finding out what the community's concerns are. And I certainly don't know those, you know, right now. But it's about interacting with the community. It's about implementation, community surveys, letting, getting feedback from the community in terms of diversity and what their concerns are.
Anybody else? Mind you, Jim?
Laurie, what's that? How are you?
Good morning, sir. How are you?
Unfortunately, many, many police interactions involve individuals who have suffered from mental illness. Can you talk to me about, and perhaps give me examples, of how you would, as chief, advise officers to handle situations like that, what you might implement to help in situations like that?
Sure. So I can tell you what we've, we implemented in Ashland. So we, we have a, we have a jail diversion program, what's called the jail diversion program, where we have a mental health clinician contracted through Advocates, which is our community mental health agency. She rides on a daily basis with the officers. She's out on the road with the officers. We share her, because we're a pretty small community, we share her with three other towns. She's available to us Monday through Friday, anytime. And we've, we've had a pretty, we've really had great success with her. Because prior to that, we were just arresting our way out of the problem. And that's not the way to deal with it, right? Mental illness is, it's becoming very prevalent because programs are being closed, or, you know, agencies are shutting down. So we're seeing more and more of, of the mental health issues on the street. The officers are. And I'll be honest, the police officers, they don't, they don't really want to deal with that necessarily, right? That's not their, that's not the core part of their, their job. But what we did was, we, every, every one of our employees in the department is trained in mental health first aid, to recognize mental health crises, to recognize people that are, that are having mental health issues and how to respond to those. So everybody's been trained, including our dispatches, in, in mental health first aid. And it's, we've seen, we've seen great success with the program as a whole, especially with the clinician that rides along with our officers. We weren't quite sure how it was going to work out initially because, you know, within the police culture, there's always that trust, right? Nobody, police officer doesn't want somebody riding next- We're on our third or fourth now, but it's been a very successful program for us. And we find that, in addition to that, we're able to track people a little bit more, meaning if someone's having a crisis in our community, because we have a mental health clinician who has access to records related to that person, they can tell us if they had a crisis, same thing happened last week or two weeks ago. And she does a lot of following up as well to try and get the client, the patient, follow-up treatment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I actually have a question. You mentioned that the clinician is on Monday through Friday. How do you handle it, I'll say nights and weekends?
So we have access to, in addition, as part of the program, we have access to, it's called psychiatric emergency service. It's an on-call, it's the same agency, Advocates, but it's a different element within the organization. So they have a hotline that we can call and get advice from if we need to. We also have clinicians based at the hospital. We use Metro West's medical sirephiling and NADA. And they both have, Advocates has clinicians based at both those emergency rooms around the block. So obviously, if, if we need, if we feel someone's harmed to themselves or others, we have the ability to, to issue a Section 12 or voluntary commitment to have them evaluated. We do that pretty often as well. So, I mean, our ultimate goal really is to ensure that they aren't going to harm themselves or anyone else and to get them treatment, and that's ultimately our goal.
So, you know, prior to having this type of arrangement, it would more put them in the cell and take them to court. Now you've got more of a, more of an option to be able to help them versus hurt them.
Well, again, we were, you know, kind of arresting our, and I say we, the police culture as a whole was arresting our way out of the problem because at three o'clock in the morning, you didn't have any, you didn't have any other avenues, you know, and something was going on. I say arresting or issuing a Section 12, that kind of thing. So it wasn't, it wasn't solving the problem because it was becoming a revolving door, right? And they would go in and then they would come back out on the street, and we were dealing with it the following week and the following week, and it was the same thing over and over. This way, we have someone that can actually follow up with them and assist them in getting the, and the families getting the treatment they need. We certainly didn't, you know, develop the program. The program actually was developed in Framingham, the next town over from us, as a, as an element of their SWAT team initially several years ago. So we've kind of adopted that, we've adopted that program on a regional basis.
Denise?
I'm good for now, thank you.
Ellen?
Hi, again. So I guess my question is around the term community policing, and you did address it a little bit earlier, but it's, it's a term that I'm not completely clear that everybody agrees on what that means. So could you just talk a little bit about what it does mean to you and how your current department, how Ashland is, is addressing sort of what the issues that come up in community policing? How you, how you see the department responding to that?
So I think a lot of departments use the term community policing, and they, they believe it's program-based, because we have programs where our community police agency and organization. I think it's a, it's really a philosophy that needs to be developed within the organization. I, I think the two, the core talents of community policing are community engagement and collaborative problem solving. I think, you know, community engagement, community engagement breeds familiarity. Familiarity builds trust ultimately within, within a community. And I think that you need to sort of embrace that philosophy as a whole and not just have programs. And I know Stowe, and I'm not suggesting for a second that, that the Stowe Police Department doesn't follow, do, do any of this and doesn't, isn't a community policing organization, because I know they have several programs that they, they do, they do provide. You know, they have, they have a program for the seniors, check-in, they have, they're members of the Restorative Justice Initiative, you know, they provide Citizens Police Academy. I think those are all very, very, very beneficial. We, in Ashland, do some of the similar things. We have citizens during normal times, not pandemic times, we would, we have a citizens' police academy. We have, you know, we have a bike patrol, mountain bike patrol, where we put officers out on mountain bikes. And we have a farmer's market in town during the summer where we, we want a police presence there, not, just to get to know people, just to engage with the community. And we use our auxiliary offices a lot for that as well. And we also have a substation on our south side of town, a police substation, where we assign officers to that on a regular basis. It's sort of, it's one of our patrol sectors, so that officer assigned to that sector essentially works out of that office. So, you know, we have office hours and things of that nature, and they can go in there, write reports, meet with, meet with citizens, meet with members of the community that have issues. It's one of our busier areas in town, so we, we found great success with the programs we have. You know, we obviously provide, you know, we, in the winter time, we do Toys for Tots. The police department hosts a Toys for Tots initiative. We, we have Christmas tree lighting every year. Again, it's, it's about having a presence at those things and having high visibility at those things.
I'm trying to find, had it, one of your, in your response to your question, you talked about an advisory group, advisory committee of, I think of citizens, I'm trying, I circled on your answers in the, I'm trying to remember where I wrote it down. Is that something that, that you would see as part of sort of community policing in terms of ongoing?
I think it's extremely valuable, absolutely, because, you know, we're inside the police department looking out. We don't really know what the community's perception is of us. And I, I've talked about, you know, community surveys as well. I think they're very, very valuable to, to us, to kind of get a feel for what the community's concerns are, what their perception is of us, what they, how they perceive the service they're receiving. You know, our community did a similar survey a couple of years ago, not, not focused just solely on the police department, but the services as a whole in the town. And, you know, some of the, some of the answers might surprise us. We don't, we're not on the outside looking in. So I do absolutely encourage an advisory committee of some sort. You know, and I, I think what you're referring to, as I talked about, strategic planning and creating a, a committee in, in developing that strategic plan.
Follow-ups for that?
I'm going off the script a little bit, just going back to one of our, one of the questions we've asked before. If it, if an emergency of a highly sensitive situation occurs, please explain the techniques you would employ to keep the town administrator and the board of selectmen informed on the situation on a daily basis and how you would keep the town administrator and board informed about projects, problems, and issues?
So it's, it's not something I don't do now. I think it's important to have ongoing communication with, with the town administrator and the board of selectmen. Obviously, following the chain of command, I go through the town administrator. But I think it's ongoing communication, daily interaction, you know, in, during office hours and outside of office hours as well. And I think when, I would have to, I would ideally have the town administrator draft up a time, you know, this is how we've done it anyways, is that in terms of the chain of command, is these are the incidents we want to know about. And essentially, you know, they're very vague, and sometimes it's, one of the things we have, one of the stipulations we have on there is anything that might create media interest. Because, and I, I know you said it during the, the search committee, me, interview, and I, I say this all the time, I don't want to wake up at 5:30 and turn on the news and there's my community on the news, and I don't know anything about it. And that's happened. It's absolutely happened. And, or I come into work and Channel 7 is parked across the street from the police station. What is, you know, your heart drops, and, and I can understand, I can certainly understand that. So I think it's, it's about ongoing communication. You know, I don't think that it's just, you know, weekly or monthly communication. I think it's, it's about finding out what her expectations are, what the, what the selectmen's expectations are, and follow those expectations.
Kevin?
May I?
What do you think are the most important qualities and characteristics of a chief of police? Hold on, I got a couple.
Okay.
That's a faulty part question. Do you have those qualities? And would your current and past retired peers agree with those statements?
Okay. So I think the more important, I guess, the more important qualities is honesty, integrity, credibility. You have to have a knowledge of the field, experience of the field of law enforcement. You need to be a good communicator. I think you need to have excellent conceptual skills. I need, I think you need to be able to build a vision for the organization and execute, execute that, that vision. I think you need to be able to relate to others. I think you need to have a great amount of empathy and compassion as well. I, and I think you need to be organized, you know, organized in the work you do and your time management, because I'm, I'm not naive to know that this is, you know, this is really a round-the-clock job. And I'm sure Denise can, can attest that she's, she's probably on the phone all the time and getting calls all the time. And you need to be approachable and available to the community and to the department. I feel I do have those qualities, yes. My phone's always on in terms of that. I feel I'm honest, I'm credible, I'm a good communicator. And I feel that my phone's always on, I'm always on duty, much to the demise of my, my girlfriend. But, you know, I get calls all hours of the night, and this, you know, lately, we've been, we've been extremely busy lately while I'm having to go in all hours of the night, two or three o'clock in the morning. So that's nothing new to me. I believe, yes, my, my past chiefs and my current chief will attest to that.
Courtney?
Okay. How would you handle a situation when subordinate is reported as being sexist, racist, homophobic, or otherwise exclusionary? And, or worse? I mean, how are you going to handle a situation where it could be, I mean, we recently had something that was worse than that, where something went terribly wrong?
of the incident, my primary, my primary goal would be to protect the victim and to protect anybody involved, also to protect everyone's rights involved, even the accused. Because obviously, you know, you're, you're innocent until proven guilty kind of thing. And then to ensure, obviously communicating with, with the town and the town administration the entire time, but to conduct a complete, full and complete investigation and to, in terms of, you know, in terms of what you guys had to deal with, it would, it would involve, you know, fully cooperating with the district attorney's office and that kind of thing as well. But again, I think ensuring everybody's rights were upheld and ensuring the safety of everybody involved, including the victim, most important. And trying to get to the bottom of the incident, whatever occurred.
That's, that's my question.
Okay. No, no, that's, I, I also think, you know, from, from your perspective, in, you know, last spring, it's about being transparent about the incident, right? It's, we all have to, we all have incidents that are embarrassing to us, every community. And I think it, it really, it really enhances the trust of the community and, and the town and the town manager when you're, as transparent as you can about it, obviously, again, making sure everybody's rights are upheld, so, and some things you just can't talk about openly and in public, so.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ellen?
Just to follow up on, in terms of the sort of, the management of your staff, what have you found in terms of training? And, I mean, because a lot of these things are, you know, we've grown up in certain worlds, and the older you are, the more likely some of these issues are not like, you know, transgender people, even gay, lesbian people might not be something people have experienced. I'm just wondering what you've found, you know, beyond the policies, like to, to help people move forward in their policing role, but with those sort of, those kind of issues and sort of inherent bias?
In terms of police officers in the department?
Yeah.
I mean, there's all kinds of training available now, you know. I'm a big proponent of training, and I'm a big proponent of training as topics arise, you know. We just saw the police reform bill coming out, right? So I think we're going to see a lot of training coming up, required training, mandated training. I know, like, our in-service training this year, one of the topics was, is, was implicit bias and bias-free policing. So that's, and I don't, it's a hot topic, but I don't say hot topic to minimize the, the topic by any means. As I said at one time, community policing was the hot topic. So I suspect 10 years from now, there'll be something else out there that we're, it's constantly evolving in the police world. So I, I believe in keeping up with the, keeping up with the times, keeping up with what's going on in the world. And, you know, this police reform bill, we've seen coming for quite some time, and a lot of departments took the initiative ahead of time to implement certain things, you know, the requirement to intervene, the one, the duty to intervene requirement. A lot of departments, you know, about a year ago, implemented that in their policies because you could see it coming, it was, it was pretty evident. And I think, so I think it's, it's about keeping an open mind. I think it's about watching what's coming down, watching what the concerns are, and making sure your officers are trained to that. And obviously, you know, training costs money, but there's a lot of training that's free too. And there's a lot of online training right now that's, that's, you know, free or at a minimal cost, so.
Yeah? Yeah?
Again, I want to ask you sort of a management question, management. Tell me if you were selected chief, tell me what you would do in the first three years of your tenure, and also, how do you think the department would look different after a year and then after five years?
Okay. So my first, I mean, I created a, an entry plan for my first 90 days. So essentially, that entry plan is about immersing myself in the community, getting to know the community members, getting to know their concerns, but also getting, having the community get to know me as well. Not just as a police chief, but as a member of the community as a person. So my first, my first 90 days, I feel will be about listening, learning, and leading. So listening to the concerns, listening, seeing, seeing what the cultural norms are of the community of the police department, learning and, and leading. And what I mean by that is taking a lot of that information and ultimately creating a strategic plan, or creating a, you know, clearly defined vision, mission, and values for the department, and creating a strategic plan based on that and what the community wants to see in the police department. And I, I can't sit here and tell you that I know what the community wants in the police department. You know, I think there's some, some communities all have the same, very common wants in their departments, but Stowe's probably got some unique, some unique concerns as well, so especially based on what you guys just went through. So it would also involve me getting to know the members of the police department, getting to know their strengths, their weaknesses, their, their, their interests, getting to know them personally, building that team from the inside out, and getting, like I mentioned, getting to know other department heads, and getting to know the school department, kind of immersing myself into those things, and then developing a vision and a strategic plan for the department, and certain, specific goals to set for the department. I, I don't foresee the size of the department necessarily changing. What I do foresee is an opportunity to professionalize department. It's not, to me, it's not a professional police department by any means. What I mean professionalizes in, on paper. You know, I talked about in my, my written responses, I, I think accreditation is extremely valuable. I think it allows us to perform a bottom-up or top-down evaluation of the organization, its operations, policies, procedures, all those types of things. And to, it allows us the opportunity to identify our strengths, weaknesses, any opportunities, any challenges, and to modify those as well. any challenges, and to modify those as well. Again, I've never seen the policies and procedures for the Stowe Police Department, but I can tell you, you know, for many, many, many years, my police department, our policies and procedures were out of date. And they allowed us to, they allow us to do things that we shouldn't be doing. So I think, in terms of professionalizing it, I think in terms of having a clearly defined chain of command, I'm looking huge for a form of supervision, effective supervision. I don't believe in having supervisors just to say we have supervisors. I don't believe in having patrol officers with stripes. I think supervisors need to supervise in order to fulfill our obligations as a police department. It's not the same department, it's not the same organization it used to be. There's a lot of liability and a lot of responsibility that police officers hold in their hands, so.
Thank you. You're welcome. No questions? Denise?
I will ask a question. So you have talked about the police reform. So how do you see the police reform bill and the newly created post impacting your position as chief?
Well, I see it impacting police officers all around, but I don't foresee it impacting us negatively. I think post has been around for a long time in other areas of the country, and I think it's really, again, professionalizing the police officer's position. I know, having read through the police reform bill, a lot of what they talk about is investigations. That's a big part of having an outside entity that conducts the investigations. In terms of the post itself, I think it's going to allow us more money for training, ultimately, probably federal funding. I think it's going to have mandated training, obviously. It's going to allow us to, or create a more culture of accountability as well, which it's meant to do, really. But I don't see anything in that police reform bill that really concerns me. It concerns me. I think it's, as a chief of police, it's going to be about implementing certain policies, certain standards. And a lot of, as I mentioned, a lot of police departments have already implemented those standards, the duty to intervene, the chokeholds, you know, those types of things. But I think ultimately, if most police officers are out there doing the right thing, I think if you're being compassionate, you have an empathy, you're doing what you're trained to do, and you're out there as a person first, I think most police officers are already following the guidelines of that police reform bill.
Can I ask a follow up? So do you have concerns, since all existing police officers are required to be certified, and as part of that process, the expectation is personnel folders will be turned over? So what do you feel is your role as the chief in facilitating that certification and then maintaining employee certification going forward?
So, I mean, I think it's set forth in the legislature, right? I mean, it's about the, we're not going to have a choice. You're going to have to forward those on. Personally, I don't have a problem with it, no. I don't know what the personnel folders look like in the Stowe Police Department. I imagine there could be some stumbling blocks along the way, or maybe there's none, I don't know. But certainly, those are issues that would have to be addressed as they come up. So it could certainly have an effect on, you know, if someone's not able to get licensed, I guess, per se, it could have an effect on our manpower allocation, absolutely.
So you talked, you mentioned at one point about schools, and I wanted to sort of ask around, since I think one of the issues that a town like ours and probably like Ashland, you know, things come up with the kids, kids meaning anywhere from, I mean, mostly maybe middle, high school, even, you know, college. I was actually a huge fan of DARE back in the day, not so much for the drug awareness, but it was that connection with young kids, with the police officer personally. And in fact, the DARE officer, who's still on the Stowe force, still remembers my kids. My kids are in their late twenties now, you know, so it really made an impact on them. How do you see, you know, what's the role in this sort of modern day policing around how you handle all the issues that come up with teenage drinking and drugs and how do you make, and especially, I guess, maybe a little bit in the context of what's been happening nationally, how do you make young people feel more comfortable with the police department?
I mean, I think it's, I'll start by saying that I was a DARE officer, and I started my policing career because of, they didn't call them DARE officers back then, it was a primary intervention officer. And Sergeant Neuss from the Born Police Department, which is where I went to school, was in my school constantly, and thus, he's a big part of the reason I became a police officer. That being said, I'm a big proponent of, you know, programs like DARE, which is sort of non-existent today, but, and school resource officers. I was a school resource officer in Ashland. We have two school resource officers, one in the high school and one that serves the middle school and the elementary schools. So I'm a big proponent of having, you know, obviously, I know you have a regional high school, so with the approval of the town and a discussion with the superintendent, you know, I'd be interested in, obviously, at least having a presence. It may not be a full-time thing, but having a presence in the schools, because I do think it heads off a lot of problems. We get a lot of information come back from our school resource officers about certain things that are going to happen over the weekend before they even happen, because he's built the trust within the school, he's built the trust with a lot of the students, that they feel comfortable coming to him, and he's been in the school for a long time, where they feel comfortable coming to him and telling him what's coming up, what they're hearing. And we've been able to have a lot of things because of that, parties, you know, kids meeting here, fights, those types of things. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Any other? No? I'm going to pass?
Okay.
You got a harder one.
In your years of working with the public, what was the belief to how the public saw you personally, your performance? And if there were areas of concern, what did you do to overcome and change those areas?
I think overall, I have a good reputation within the community. I think every department I've worked for, I have a good reputation in the community. I think, and I like to say this because I have a lot of empathy and compassion for people, I think, you know, as Robert Peal said, right, we're the police and the public, the public's the police, so we just have to be focused. We have a full-time focus on law enforcement and what was still part of the public. And I think sometimes that's forgotten. It shouldn't be us versus them. So that being said, I feel as though I have a good reputation within the community, and I feel, I feel I've always had a good reputation in the other communities I've worked in as well. There was a second part to that.
I think it was more, have there been any concerns that you can think of, sort of on the lines of, you know, what are your, you gave us your strengths, what do you think your weaknesses are?
Yeah, so, I mean, were there any concerns in the community you referred to?
Yeah.
Okay. So we went through a time about eight years ago now, and I was, it's no secret, it was, we were in the media almost every day. There were some concerns from a group in the community who, for whatever reason, we had an officer involved shooting that I was incident commander for, I was the shift commander that particular day. And we had conspiracy theorists in town who had his own blog and things of that nature, but he, it was a friend of his that was shot, and he was out to get us, that's really what it boiled down to. He made up things, you know, accusations that we intentionally executed this individual, which wasn't the case, by any means, obviously. So that went on for several months, articles in the paper, an online blog, you name it. A lot of people were upset about that, a lot of the officers that were being named, myself included, I was being named, and it was a group in town, an advisory group, I guess is what they called themselves. But their goal was to get several of us fired that were involved in that incident. And a lot of officers were upset because it wasn't me that talked about. And my philosophy in that case is, listen, I didn't do anything wrong, you didn't do anything wrong, the truth will come up, and we just, we can't engage with that. And it did, the truth did come out finally, and those groups have since disbanded and I've moved on with my career, obviously, and in fact, you know, I've been applauded for not engaging with them and not saying anything. So I feel like, I feel like the truth's eventually going to come out, you know, if it's not true, so.
Okay.
May I ask one quick follow up tonight?
Sure.
May I correctly assume that no criminal charges, no disciplinary actions came from that incident?
None, no, no.
Thank you.
I'm just going to ask a quick question on that. In retrospect now, obviously, you probably questioned whether you were handling it properly back then, or whether you could have done anything different?
The incident itself.
You know, after, how you handled the publicity and things like that, do you think that there was anything that, you know, did you follow the right path then, or would you do anything different now, based on what you know?
No, I felt, I felt I did absolutely everything correctly. I'm fortunate that I have a lot of mentors that I can talk to, that I can bounce things off of and get some great advice from as well, and that was advice they gave me as well, was just don't engage. And I had, we happened to have an interim chief at the time who was solid. He was very experienced, just an all-around great guy who legitimately cared about us. And, you know, I consider him a mentor as well, and I, he was able to, we're all human beings, I'm not going to sit here and say it didn't affect me, it absolutely affected me, you know, for months and months and months, because, you know, nobody wants that, you know, nobody wants your name in the paper, and nobody wants to feel they're being attacked and come after, so. But I feel, I wouldn't change anything I did in terms of that. I feel like I, I feel like I handled it professionally, and I think that's the important thing.
How did the truth eventually come?
In terms of the, well, in terms of the incident itself, like I said, there was a lot of conspiracies around the officer involved shooting, and that it was a big cover-up and this and that. And ultimately, when the district attorney took six months to complete their report because of, because of the accusations that were being made in the community. And it normally doesn't take that long, and when their report was finally made public, and they did make it public, a lot of, you know, a lot of what, obviously, there's people that say, oh, it was a cover-up by the district attorney's office. But, you know, there's a lot of details in those reports that come out. So that's how I say the truth came out.
I assume maybe some civil litigation?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Civil litigation?
There was no civil litigation, no, no.
So DA report, and that was it?
That was it, yeah. And then, you know, like I said, you know, groups had their conspiracy theories, but they eventually disbanded and moved on, so.
Do you, so, around domestic violence and sexual assault, is there a way to, so the question originally was worded as how will you prevent that? And I don't know if that's, personally, I don't think that's a fair question. So the way I'm going to ask it is, how do you see the department supporting the community to be healthy around these issues, or to be safe around, or if there is prevention, or can you say?
I don't think you got to prevent it 100%, but I think you can provide education and outreach programs for domestic violence and sexual assault. Having worked at two colleges, at a large university and small college, that was something we did all the time, it was outreach, it was education on sexual assault and domestic violence. In Ashland, I was, we created a, it was a collaborative effort with several other towns, high-risk domestic violence team, who we met once a month, and I was a member of that for several years, where we met once a month and we talked about sort of the higher risk cases in our communities. So a lot of it revolved around strangulation, but the higher risk incidents, and so that everybody was kind of on the same page, because what affected one community, we're finding out that, again, two, three weeks later is happening, someone is in another community doing the same thing. So, and it allowed us to perform outreach to the victims as well and to get them services that they need through, we did it through, we did it through a high-risk domestic violence team that was based out of Framingham, but we did it with Framingham, there were several towns, Hollister was involved in it, there was several of our neighboring communities. I think it's about education and outreach, really, and if that answers your question?
It does. Thank you.
Jim?
So, from the national conversations that's going on, it's asked even more specifically about ethical commercial reporting, there were a couple of aspects to, on this act of social justice, which I think you touched upon, but the other aspect from that is about use of force. Can you address that, and when I say that, feel free to talk about incidents that you de-escalated or helped to de-escalate, and your philosophy and your thoughts about use of force?
Well, I think, you know, use, depending on the situation, obviously, but I think there's many incidents where you can de-escalate the situation, you know, to avoid a fatal use of force situation. In terms of, you know, the George Floyd incident, a gentleman died in the custody of the police and that should never have happened. And that's, you know, that's my feeling on that, that no one should ever die in the custody of the police, regardless of how you feel about everything else, you know, surrounding that. But I think use of force, it's important to have updated policies, I've mentioned that before. It's also important to have updated training on a yearly basis on the use of force and the department's policy on use of force. We, as I mentioned, we implemented the mental health first aid program with all of our officers, which, and we, our officers have all attended de-escalation training. And again, that's all part of in-service training as well on a yearly basis. But we've implemented policies on de-escalation as well, and officers are expected to follow those. Obviously, there's times when you just can't, that's the reality of it. But we have implemented several weapons platforms that are less lethal weapons platforms, tasers. We use, we have a weapon system of beam backgrounds, which we've used successfully on three or four occasions with specifically someone's had a knife and is engaging with the officers, so that those ultimately have saved lives. Although it's a use of force, it's not a lethal use of force. But I think, in my opinion, I think there's times when you can de-escalate, certainly. And I think there's times when you just can't, it's not going to, it's not going to be possible. But I think it's important to have the policy procedures in place, the training in place as well, and to make sure everybody is following that.
Can you give me an example of a time you think you successfully de-escalated the situation?
We had a suicidal female that was threatening to, one of the colleges I worked at, threatening to jump out a window in a third or fourth floor restroom. And I will start out by saying that the department at the time was unarmed, the police department, when I worked there. And it was on the overnight shift sometime in the morning, and I went into the restroom, I had officers waiting outside, and we were in the town of Wellesley, so Wellesley, the Wellesley Police Department was waiting outside, and I said, let me just go in and talk to her. And she was angry about not talking to anybody, I was finally able to convince her to let me to come into the bathroom. She was sitting on the floor, I sat on the floor next to her, and we had a conversation for a good 45 minutes. I was finally able to convince her to, we had an ambulance waiting to go to the hospital. And she held my hand on the way down to the ambulance. She wanted me to go to the hospital with her, obviously, I couldn't, but she, her being a student and a member of our community there, obviously, several weeks later, she came into the station to see me and thank me for what she had done, and she was getting treatment at that point, and she was feeling good about, you know, things. And she ultimately ended up graduating, you know, I guess, we became friends for a lack of better terms, you know, and she ended up graduating and going on with her career, so I consider that a success.
Thank you. Sure. Follow up on that? Denise?
You don't want to turn to Ellen?
We're down to about five minutes.
So I just have a, it's sort of a follow up to, when you were talking about the situation in Ashland, and obviously, we went through this sort of trauma here in Stowe with the former chief. Can you talk about how you Can you talk about how you, you talked about how it sort of took months for you to get it out of your head, or to deal with the sort of stuff going on in the community? I'm just wondering, how do you work with, particularly, I guess, as a chief, when that comes up, and the feelings of your members, the members of the department feeling, like even if they weren't personally involved, it rattled them, or, you know, people are saying pretty mean things about the department.
Sure.
How do you address that with them, sort of as individuals, you know, to sort of move forward?
Again, it's about being professional, and I think, you know, most of the officers wouldn't be in this field if they weren't professionals. And I think it's about reminding them that, but I also think it's about hearing them out, letting them have a voice, not necessarily in the community, but as a chief, face-to-face, let them vent, let me hear their concerns, why they're upset about it. And, you know, I can understand why they're upset about it, I may not know all the reasons. So I think it's about letting them vent. And I will also say this, my background is in officer wellness. I have a counseling background, and I firmly believe in, and I do, I implement this in my department, we have critical incident stress debriefings for any major incident. It's not an operational critique, it's more of a mental health intervention, so to speak. It's not counseling, but it's sorta to, we always say, skim the oil off the top and get them back on duty. So I think it's implementing programs like that to make sure, our offices are human beings, and they're no different than anybody else, they're doing a job, but things affect them, even if they say it's not gonna affect them. So I think implementing programs like critical incident stress debriefings, officer wellness programs, things of that nature, certainly gonna help them. You know, we've certainly, in my department, we've had our substance abuse issues, alcohol abuse, and things of that nature. And I see alcohol abuse and substance abuse issues as a symptom of the problem, but there's a deeper problem. The issue is, it becomes its own problem, and many times can cost somebody their job. So I like to head those off in the past. And you can ask some of my officers that, we could have something as simple as, I say "simple", I'm not to minimize the impact, but a fatal wound acclimatizing, where we've all kind of done many, many, many of those over our career, but I implement, I have a debriefing, I have a debriefing team come out and do it, because I look at it as preventive maintenance. It's just like changing the oil on a cruiser. You know, we gotta get the old oil out, and get the fresh oil in, and because there's gonna be another incident tomorrow, next week, two weeks down the road, you don't need this one bogging down your mind, so.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we've got about five minutes left, so we're gonna open it up for any final statements you might wanna make to us, and as well as any questions you might have for us.
Okay, great. So I, you know, I thank you for having me, certainly. I was excited to make it this far in the process. I will say, I'm interested in the department for various reasons, but this is the first and only chief's position I've ever applied for. And I didn't apply for it just to apply for it. I applied for it when I saw the posting, I did my research, I checked out the community. I came here, I've eaten at Emma's Cafe, I've eaten at the Stowe Cafe, I've shopped here, 'cause I wanted to get a feel for what the community was about. And I feel it's a very close-knit community, I feel it's very family-oriented, and I liked the feel that I got when I came here, so I opted to apply for the position. I feel that my background, my training, my experience, my education would benefit the department and the town of Stowe. I feel it would have a positive impact on the town, and I feel that I can help rebuild the trust of the community, the trust within the community of the police department. And I feel like I have the ability and the experience to do that, my leadership experience, my counseling background, I feel like I, and I'm eager to do that. I'm absolutely eager to do that, and to help in that process, assist in that process. I worked in, as I mentioned, I worked in a community, the town of Dover, which is very similar in nature and size and structure, they even got, they have a regional high school, they call fire department. And as I mentioned, it was a very low crime rate, much like Stowe, and we had more time to engage in the community. And I will say that was my first municipal policing career, and to date, I would probably say it was my most rewarding position, because I was able to make friendships, I was able to build relationships. I was able to, the department was a family, and we did things outside of work together as well, it wasn't just within work. So with that being said, I feel like I'm a great fit for the community, but more importantly, I feel the community's a great fit for me, and that's important to me as well. And I think I can certainly help make a positive impact on moving forward.
Any questions for us?
The only thing I'll ask, and I sort of ask them at the, with the search committee, and Denise gave me her answer, so I'm interested in hearing the, you know, the board of selectmen's answer. You know, what are you looking for in terms of improving the department and the growth of the department, the police department, as a board of selectmen?
Good question. I think we want a professional department that can move forward, you know, and embrace new policies, procedures, that, you know, for a modern police force. You know, that's, me in a nutshell, anybody else wanna weigh in on that?
I want somebody to come in who's going to make our police department trustworthy. I don't want our police department to be the butt of jokes. I don't want, like, I just, I want, I'm proud to live in this community. I, and so I feel like getting back on track with that is going to be important to me as well. And having a chief that is going to realize the trauma that his officers have been through, and is going to really work with them as well, I think is important to me.
Adding to that, I've seen an instance where I thought our officers were being compassionate and incredibly timely in the process of moving an arrest. And I think that kind of culture, that I've heard you use, it was culture and philosophy and empathy and compassion, those are all really important to me within the framework of law order and keeping, you know, keeping us from being the butt of jokes and so forth.
I'm looking for all the things in any chief executive officer, I'm looking for in a chief, all the technical confidence, the experience, the administrative confidence, plus. Given what we've gone through, I'm looking for someone who's capable of redefining and reproducing the position of chief of police to the future. I find that, to the extent anyone has lost any trust or credibility, it's not necessarily a member of the police service, but it is a position.
I don't have any of that.
I actually think we're ready to move on.
Great. Well, I thank you for having me again, it was great meeting all of you and some of you for a second time, so.
Thank you.
I shake your hand.
Thank you.
We've got about a 10, 15-minute recess, so we can be at, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back, this is our second interview of the day. I think, Mike, you know everybody that's here, so I'm not going to bore everybody with repeating it. First off, what we did is, we had a discussion earlier, and only the folks that are speaking will take their face masks down, and while it's speaking, so that people can hear a little bit better. You, on the other hand, because we're expecting you to do most of the speaking today, you can either keep your face mask on or take it off, whichever is most comfortable with you. So that way, people can hear you a little bit better. I should've said, first, welcome, Mike Solis, acting chief.
Thank you.
The way we're planning on doing this today is, we have it scheduled for an hour interview. What we will do is, I will start off with questions. First one will be asking you to provide some information on yourself, and tell us what you'd like. You'll have about five minutes, and then we will go round robin around the room, and ask you a series of questions. Anybody who would like to, any of the board members, Denise, that has follow-up questions, I'll be recognizing them, and we'll kind of go that way. So, that being said, unless anybody, unless I've forgotten anything, Mike, why don't you give us five minutes about yourself, and why you wanna be the chief of police and stuff?
Okay. Well, thank you very much. As Tom said, my name is Michael Solisi. And a little bit about myself, so I moved here going into sixth grade. I still have family in town. I went to the Hale School, and I worked for a few different farms in town. I continued on into high school, and that's when I really started getting into public safety. I was able to participate in the Neshova EMS program, and that's really what got me into the public safety aspect of my life. I really enjoyed helping people, and I wanted to continue that on when I went to college. Originally, I went to school to become a teacher, but that public safety aspect was really calling me, and I really wanted to continue helping people, and I had friends that were police officers, and I could hear their stories, so I was like, you know, that's the path I wanna take. I really wanna be a police officer. So I moved back home, I was able to join the Stowe Fire Department as a qualified firefighter EMT, and through college, I was able to intern at the Stowe Police Department, which led me to a career as a part-time officer, dispatcher, dispatch supervisor. And I really started helping the town out as much as I could. I was able to help the highway department out with following, the town needed an assistant animal control officer, help with that. I was able to stay vocal with my family. My family definitely, I still have family on Sawmill Road, and my immediate family, my wife and children, we live right over Maynard, right, and they participate in many things that Stowe has to offer in Maynard, Asbury Valley Little League, they participated in, my son still works for a farm here in Stowe. And, you know, we participate in other small businesses that, they're just, it's so great here. I've continued my career as a dispatcher, police officer, detective, detective sergeant, and now in the role of acting police chief. I wanna be a police chief for Stowe, that is my goal. I wanna change what the role of the Stowe police chief looks like. We need to have a chief, especially in these times, that is not just desk-oriented, but I wanna lead the department, and by saying that, we're gonna go in a direction that makes us a better police department. I wanna be part of that change. I look back in history and think of all the police reform that has gone on, and think of those chiefs and say, what it must've been like to go through change during their errors, and how great it is to look back and say that they were part of it, and to lead the department as part of that. And that's what I'm looking for, is to change the role, to be more visible to not only the officers that are involved at the department, but to the community, because we have to be part of the community. As a chief, I have to be able to listen to the community's concerns and compliments, and be able to respond to that. And being a desk chief is not the role that Stowe needs. We need somebody who is more visible and out there. And that's why I wanna lead the department, because we need a chief, we need to change the role of the chief of police right now. So that's a little bit about me, and why I wanna be chief.
Mike?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Who are you? So I have a multi-part question. How would you address possible concerns of your coworkers, your coworkers, to your elevation to chief, slash concerns of the community of hiring from within? How can you and will you create necessary change from the inside?
So, how would my coworkers adjust?
How would you address possible concerns of your coworkers?
And then we'll...
Granted, you've already been serving in that position, so maybe you could speak a little bit to how the transition went to even you becoming the acting chief?
Okay.
And then, concerns of the community from hiring within, given the fact that the last couple of police chiefs have been internal candidates as well? And how can you and will you create necessary change from the inside of the department?
So first, the coworkers. I'm a by-the-book officer, I always have been, and that book is changing, and I definitely wanna be part of that change. The officers have, I've earned their trust, and I've earned their support, and they have my trust and support. And when I became acting police chief, they knew what they were getting with me, they knew that there was gonna be change because of how I've been through my career. So I have that trust, and they have accepted the changes that I've already been making over the past eight months. When I originally became acting police chief, there was an expectation that was to maintain the department, and I couldn't just sit by and let that just maintain. That's not who I am, or who I have been as an officer, we had to make it better. We had to look at ourselves and take a really deep look and say, what have we been doing? Where can we go? And let's rebuild this trust that we need to rebuild to the community. So my coworkers supported me in that, they supported the policies that I brought forward to this board, and they continue to support me to this day. So the community concerns, so the, I have established many relationships over 20 years, more than that, within town. I've had conversations with community leaders as acting police chief, and I'm gonna revisit those and develop new conversations. I can go back as chief now and say, "Hey, we've been talking about this for the past eight months, these are the changes that we're looking for, and now as permanent chief, we can deliver on those, and let's have a continued conversation." So as the previous chiefs were internal, they went down one path, and a lot of the times during that path, that travel, I was directed to go out into the public and represent the police department. And I went, I believe I exceeded the expectations of those chiefs, and I believe I exceeded the expectations of the board taking over this role. That path was them, that path is not me. I'm here doing how I think the department should be led, and that is going to be, well, within, obviously, the law and the new reform and everything, but we need to be more community-oriented as a police chief. That role has to be, it can't be just at big events, like the Gobbler Race, which I helped design the safety plans for that for the past seven years, and I love that race too, because I'm always at the end at the great road at Lantern Lane, and I'm cheering on everybody that's coming over, 'cause that's like, you know, it's a great event in town. And it can't be just at Spring Fest or a town meeting, you know, you have to meet with the, the police chief has to be available. And that availability can come in a lot of different forms. I've been in the schools, that needs to continue in the schools, and that's not just for the police department to be representative in the school, it's the police chief going in, bringing the officers involved, and saying, "Hey, this is who we are, we're available, let's have a conversation if needed." But it's also off-duty too, for the police chief to be around town, off-duty, and have that availability where they're in Shaw's, and someone comes up, and I've had people come up and approach me and wanna have a conversation. That is part of being the community, 'cause you can't be a police department without the community involvement. You have to have that legitimacy for us to do our job. It is a lot easier for us to do our job when everybody's helping us. So we really have to have those conversations with our leaders, and not only just the community leaders, but also the residents in town. So if people are concerned that I'm going to follow a path that was set by, before me, that is not who I am, and my past has been to go a different route. And that's the way I'm going, I'm paving my own path here. I'm not following what the others have done.
I have one question that's sort of gonna go off of my, but I just, you have, in your acting role, put forth some policy change for sure. How are you going about, or if you haven't been able to in your acting role, what is your plan for implementing those policies within your department, and making sure that those policies are followed? And that the officers... And making sure that those policies are followed and that the officers understand the implications of the policies?
So anybody can just write a policy and then say, hey, you have to do it. But that really puts officers and the public at a disadvantage. So the policies that I have already established were our duty to intervene. And that is a huge policy that has already become part of the reform, the police reform. However, our policy, the one I put forward actually goes beyond that. And that's what we need is, it includes all employees of the police department, civilian, volunteers, janitor service, everybody at that police department is held to that standard now where the reform is just the actual officers involved. But part of that is, so to make sure that that's, the officers know what that looks like, there is epic training. That's Ethical Policing is Courage, which is out of New Orleans. And that actually shows and teaches officers how to actually, what that looks like. Because it is difficult for a junior officer to stand up to a Sergeant or Lieutenant that they think is, is doing something improper and actually have that voice and put that voice forward. But, you know, showing the officers, hey, this is, we're not going to stand for this. This is what we do at the police department. We're not going to turn around and allow these things to happen. That's going to give the officers that support that I've already given the officers. The, another policy that, general order that I put together was our pregnancy-related one. I think that's going to include a lot of, it's going to make our department more appealing to a more diverse candidate pool, because it's going to show people, hey, if you come to Stowe and you want to start a family, we're going to support that. We're going to support you in your goal to do that. Come to the Stowe Police Department, work for us. So that's another policy that was put in place. Another one was our interactions with transgender individuals. We didn't have that policy before. We didn't have the knowledge base of the saying, what happens? What happens when we interact with somebody? What do we do? And so that is, that was put in place, but we have to go beyond just putting that in place and we have to look at training that goes along. And I've been in discussions with groups that can support that training, because we can bring that in and we can have that training and put officers in a situation, in a safe situation where it's not the first time they encounter something, is on the road, is actually not trained. And you have to adhere to those policies that are in place. We do have policies and procedures that are in place now that if we, if there is a problem, complaint, that they can come to the police department. That needs to change though, because we have to have an outside entity. And I know through police reform that there's going to be a civilian review board at the state level, but we need one here locally. I would definitely be advocating for a civilian review board here in the town of Stowe, made up of senior-like officials if need be, but more so like the town administrators and civilians and the police chiefs, so that people don't think that things are going unchecked, that they can bring it to a separate agency within the town of Stowe and say, hey, I didn't like the way this happened. Can we get, can we get it looked at? Or, hey, I really liked the way this looked at. Because it can go both ways too. It doesn't always have to be negative. You know, the positive, we do a lot of positive things and say, hey, this is, this is really positive. I like the way the police department handled this and I thought somebody should know about it, because it can go both ways too. So there's always, there's that third-party check on accountability as well.
Mike? So I just want to follow up on particularly the sort of double-edged sword. So you just, I mean, essentially you've been here your whole life. And so you know tons of people. I wonder, and I guess this is sort of two-part, I don't know if you can choose which one you want to take. Part of it is, how does it complicate your job, particularly becoming chief, when you literally know these people your whole life and something might happen? I won't, I won't even try to come up with examples, because I'm sure you could come up with them faster, but you know, sort of how do you, how do you balance that? But also, you've only worked in the Stowe Police Department, so how do you make sure that you're, you're aware or learning of, you know, best practices from other departments? Or even not even best practices, like, you know, problems that have happened in other departments that you can bring to Stowe?
So, the first one is, I just want to clarify, are you talking about how do I, residents or actual officers?
I was thinking residents.
Residents. So you're right. So you look at somebody and I can, and I may know them possibly, you know, and I do know a lot of people.
You know your parents or grandparents?
So I know a lot of people. And so, you know, you have to look at what is, what is, why am I interacting with them? Is there, first of all, is there, am I interacting with them because there was a law that was broken or am I interacting with them on a positive note? And statutorily, do I have to make an arrest or criminal charge or go that route? Or can I use discretion? And we've, when I first started my career, we were really judged on how many stops did we make? How many, you know, arrests did we make? When you're starting out, you're learning to, you're learning how to do the job. And as your career goes on, you learn the why and then you can do the how better. And so what we do, so how I've gone to it is, what resources do I have? And I've had to make the tough decision of people I've gone to school with and interacted with throughout my life and had to have taken to jail, because that was what needed to be done. But as things go, time goes on, what alternatives do we have? And over the past few years, we've been able to come up with some great alternatives. We have Restorative Justice that we're a part of now. We have diversion programs that we have now available, which we didn't have when I first started. So now the manner of policing that I started with is definitely different than what I, how I perceive myself. I have worked, actually, I was a part-time officer in Littleton for a while, but when I first was asked to take on the role of Acting Police Chief, I looked at it and I looked for the board for support. I'm like, this is a new role. What can I do? How am I going to do this job? But I also reached out to other police chiefs. I reached out to Boxborough Police Chief Warren Ryder. I reached out to Acting Police Chief Richard Burrows. And I said, listen, I'm taking, I want to take on this and I want to be able to do the best thing I can for the community. And they've done great things for their community. I'm going to need some guidance and I'm still going to need some guidance continuing on. And they have been able to provide me with guidance. And they still call me too, because they're like, I may have new ideas that they haven't. And also the other mass chiefs have new ideas that we're coming up with. So it's not, it's not knowing all the answers, because I don't know all the answers. It's knowing where to look for. And I look for the select board, I look to the town administrator, I look to my resources, I look to the other chiefs and say, how have you done this? How have you done what this issue is? Or how are you tackling this problem? Or have you come up with this? I know that I'm the first one in the area to do the transgender policy. The other towns don't have that. We've been, you know, talking and trying to get training for that policy. But that's how, that's how we're looking at the best practice. And what is the state putting out? And I've continued my training. The training never stops. You always have to go and learn new things. I did fair and implicit training a couple of months ago, sorry, fair, implicit police training that even, I know it's mandated now, but that's part of the continuing process, not because as a chief, you just don't say, okay, I've got chief and I'm the one who's going to, you know, I got all the answers. No, I don't have the answers. I'm going to continue to go to training and that's going to show the officers, hey, the chief's doing it, we're going to do it too. I'm going to lead the department in that direction and show them, hey, this is how we're going to do it. I'm going to lead them to the fact that we're going to make these changes.
Thanks.
Courtney?
So I'm trying to figure out how to rephrase, reframe this question. So sort of following on a couple of the other things that have just been said. What does, what does accountability in policing look like to you? How would you address concerns of individuals regarding interactions with the police department in terms of national events and personal bias? And in what ways have you supported conversations about diversity? So I know some of that. So, I mean, because you've just said you put in the policy around transgender folks. But just, can you say a little bit about if you have a philosophy that sort of wraps this all together? So part of it is about the interactions of the police with the, with the community and maybe about people feeling safe.
Okay.
About, on either side and, and feeling that there is also a way to handle, handle it when things go wrong.
Okay. That's a lot of questions.
It is.
But I'll try my best on that one. So accountability, I talked about, you know, holding us accountable. If someone sees something that we don't, that they don't like, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're doing something wrong. But we should have a conversation on why we do things the way we do. And I've done that through our Citizens Academy and it gives people a better understanding on why police do certain things that they do. But if there is a problem and then we look back at a situation, no matter what that situation looks like, we can say, you know, that went right, no, that went wrong. And again, the civilian review board is definitely one way of doing that. Putting our policies online, that's another way, so people can look and say, hey, listen, they did this and that was within their policy. Oh, they, they definitely went outside. And they don't have to have that unsafe feeling of coming to a police station, because I know that's going through that door sometimes is a big deal for people, especially if they've had bad interactions with the police before. Because our interactions as officers is only as good as our last interaction with that, with that citizen had with a police officer. So if I have a bad interaction with you, that next officer's going to have a much more difficult time. So that's why we always try to have the best interaction we can. We give that customer service the highest possible outcome. As far as you said, to make, you know, how do people feel safe? So part of my plan for the future, and I've already been working on this, is really to do more, what we can do for substance abuse and mental health in Stowe and for the officers. And one of the things that I've done over the past eight months is come up with a, an agreement with advocates. And their crisis response team will be on scene within one hour of us requesting them. So that is really big for us, to have that resource available. And not only that, if they can't make it in an hour, we need them there quicker, we can do through like telemed and FaceTime. And they can assess and help us assess the situation, help us de-escalate a situation and really provide services during that crisis time. On top of that though, we need to go further than that. And I've already started talking, I've already started talking to advocates, I'm sorry, Department of Mental Health. And what we're coming up with, and I have a meeting on Tuesday for this, is we're going to have a jail diversion onsite clinician at the Stowe Police Station. We're going to be sharing that with the town of Boxborough, but they're going to be based 40 hours a week at the, at the Stowe Police Station. And they will be in the cruiser with us responding to calls and helping the police officer do either de-escalate or provide services. And if they're needed in Boxborough, that they'll go over to Boxborough. And this is going to be paid for, through grants, through the Department of Mental Health and it's not going to be the cost of the town. It will cause, it will cause a lot of cost savings though. It's, it'll save money for the healthcare and the criminal justice system, because now here we can help somebody on scene, because sometimes people don't need to go to the hospital, but they just need help getting through that situation. Now we can, we'll be able to provide that help and they don't have to go to the hospital. Especially now when, with the current situation of COVID and the hospitals, we don't need to send someone to the hospital if they don't need to go. And the other thing is, we don't, if we don't have to arrest, now we're saving the money on, through the criminal justice system and we're going to be able to get people the services that they need immediately. Continuing with that, another thing that I would, I'm looking at is more mental health for our police officers. Because if we as officers are mentally healthy, then we're going to provide better services for the town. And when we look at all of our training that we go, that we do as officers, we do things every year. We, for example, we go to the range every year to be proficient and we use our use of force and de-escalation. We go to that every year. What I want to do is I want to take the stigma away from going to having a therapist or getting mental health treatment. I want to take that stigma away. So if I make it a requirement and say, hey, listen, you have to go see this individual three or four times a year. So the, the officers, and every officer is required to do it, whether they go and take advantage, whether they take advantage of that time period, but it is there and that they're required to go. And we can take it away from duty status, because right now officers are looking at, if I ask for help and it's tied to duty status, I may lose my job. And we want to make sure officers are secure in knowing that if they ask for help, it's okay. Because it is okay to ask for help and it's okay to get help. So, so if they're better at coming to work and they're happier or mentally prepared to come to work, then they're going to provide a better service to our community that we really, it's going to benefit everybody. So I hope that answers your question.
Good job.
Sorry, no, Jim. Nope, you can go, because I think you're going to go down the path.
Well, I was actually going to, I think you, I was going to ask you a question about mental health, but I think you just covered it. Mike, let me ask you a very compound question. If you are selected as chief, what would your plan be for the first, let's say 90 days, 30, 90 days? And then how would the department look different after one year and then after five years?
So, I'd like to say that my 30 and 90 days have come and gone. I've already looked at my first 30 days and the next 90 days after that. I looked at what our policies were. I looked at how our police officers were, what was required of me to maintain our police department, looked at where the, what the officers were feeling. Because in my first 30 days, there was a lot of transition and a lot of uncertainty. And so to keep officers working, making sure that they came to work, got the help that they needed, that was really important at that time. So, and then the next 90 days, I was looking at the department and how can we rebuild the trust that was not there? And I wanted to reach out to leaders of our community, the church leaders, and I reached out to them and I sat down with our Social Justice Alliance and I sat down and we discussed what was lacking, where the police department was, where we're going. So I've done that in the first 30 and 90 days. And I've talked a little bit today about where I see ourselves in the next year. We have, we're going through an exciting time of police reform right now. We have some mandates that we need to do and one of those is to become certified as a police agency. That is one step to getting towards accreditation. I think accreditation is an important role that we need to do as a police department, because it's a policy-driven department. It makes us more accountable. It makes us more transparent. It looks like what we can do, the public can look at us and say what they can expect and the officers know what's expected of them. So that would be the, in the next, you know, year or so, what we're looking at. And again, I want to have this co-response jail diversion person put in place. I want to continue our relationships that we have with our Domestic Violence Services Network. I want to continue those relationships that we have with our Communities for Restorative Justice and continue our diversion programs. So these are the things that, and build upon them and revisit them. And then also, again, in the next, you know, five years, what's it going to look like at the police department? We have to really talk about recruitment. How are we recruiting officers? What does that look like? If we turn around as office, as a department, which we have in the past, and we've put certain requirements in place that exclude people, if we continue that, we're not going to have a very large candidate pool. We were always looking in the past for a full academy-trained individual with someone with a college degree. They got more points. That excludes a large group of people. We need to really look at what our recruitment's going to look like in the future. Can we offer that? Can we open it up to more people? Can we open it up to more individuals in the community and bring, and really bring in the best candidate that we can? And I think we can. I think we can turn around and say, hey, we don't need someone who has a full academy trained. We can actually send them. We can show them that we support them through their career. And we're going to start from very beginning and, and send them to the academy. We can, you know, I've seen, I've done the budgeting, I've submitted a budget. I know what the numbers look like. I think we can support that. I know we can. And I'd like to see that in the next five years, is that we look at what our candidate pool is. So that is something that is going to come in the future too.
Any follow-ups on that? Neese?
I'll defer to Neese. My question was going to be around community policing, but you talked a lot about it. So I guess I would, I would ask, so I was a big fan of DARE back in the day and, and it wasn't about the drug side, it was about just having an officer that close up, particularly with younger kids. So I guess, and particularly as you've talked about how you evolved and how the department's evolved in terms of dealing with our young people, obviously, you know, hopefully don't have that many troubles with elementary school kids, but with middle and high school kids particularly. So what do you see as sort of, what's your current strategy for, and especially, I find, particularly young people right now, get And especially, I find particularly young people right now, given the world, the national situation around policing, more skepticism, maybe more negativity. So how would you be addressing that within the Stowe population? And then specifically, like, how does the police department respond to issues that might come up with the younger set?
So we did go through some reform on the juvenile side of things years ago, which we changed how we do things because it's, was one required. But our juvenile involvement in the, well, I should say our involvement in the schools, I've been involved in schools for so long. And the DARE program was a great way for an officer to make connections to younger individuals. So through, however it dissipated, it is no longer there. We ended up having to work hard to get it back into the schools. There were some parents that were against an officer in the school, they thought it was like, you know, hallways to, you know, jail cells kind of thing, but that's not why we were there. I've been, I work closely with the administration at the schools because I think it's important to build those relationships, starting at center school and continuing on at Hail School. But we need to be able to share information. And we came up with a program, an MOU between the schools and the police department to share information because where's the second, other than home, the second most places a young person spends their life is at school. So what affects someone at home will affect that person at school. So I would have meetings, and I still have meetings with the school administration, school counselors and say, hey, we ran into this individual out in public. Or we were at this person's house because of this, they may need extra support today. Because even though they didn't see direct interaction with a police officer, it still happens in the house. So that's one thing that we're continuing on to foster relationships. Yes, I've gone into the classrooms, I'm going to continue to do that. I've gone into the gym classroom, I did that last year. But I've also, I've also presented a new program. It's not DARE, but it's Project Alert. And I put that forth towards the Shova Emergency Response Task Forces. That's like through the Health Director over there, that's a part of the committee that I'm part of, is that to get new programs in place, to get us really involved more with the students. As far as if we're dealing with a juvenile crime and what we're doing for that, we do have, if it amounts to a issue that we have to take that person to court, there's always diversion at the court level. We try not to do that unless we absolutely have to. And then we also have our Communities for Restored Justice Program. So I've participated in that, I've learned a lot from that. It is a great opportunity for, that we never had all throughout my whole career. Out of, I think we've done about 30 to 35 cases that we've recommended, I've only seen two people recidivate and that is really, you know, that says a lot. So I'm very proud to be part of that organization and be able to use that. It really, it really opens you up as an officer, you learn a lot and, you know, because you don't always see how it really impacts a victim or a suspect until you get down in a circle like this, because that's what it's a butt open circle. So, you know, we have, when we deal with juveniles, we tend to call their parents too, that's another avenue that we take. And hopefully the parents are responsible and interacting with their kids enough where it's only one type of thing. But we also have, you know, a positive stuff, too. We have our youth academy that we, that we do in the summertime, that we're going to continue to do once COVID is over and see how that looks like. A lot of things that we want to do now are limited, but we can make, we can still have those interactions. You know, we still go to the schools, we still are still responsible for site safety, that is, you know, paramount. We have to go in there, we have to make sure that the building is safe, we have to make sure that, you know, the exterior and school safety is still part of our responsibility. So we have those parts of it, too.
So, and I don't want, I, this is a little awkward, but I feel like I have to ask you directly. So you've been here a long time and I would say, and especially when you've talked about how things have evolved, one of the concerns I've heard from several parents of people who are probably more my age, their kids are now in their twenties, that you were pretty hard on teenagers for a particular period of time. Can you just talk to that? And I don't, I mean, I don't know a lot of specifics, so I'll just say that was the sort of sense I've gotten. And it came from several people, so it wasn't just one incident.
So there has been, and I've heard that, and again, when I started my career, that was the direction of the matrix that we were looking at, to, you know, go out there, stop cars, write tickets, you know, enforce the law, enforce the law, enforce the law. They didn't have, we didn't have a lot of these options available. And even with these options available, the person who is on the other side, if they take certain steps or a certain direction, it really limits our discretion, which is such a big tool for us. So if I'm interacting with somebody and they decide, and I'm investigating a crime, for example, and they decide to invoke their rights, then my discretion is stopped at that time and I have to take, go in one direction because I don't want to violate any other, I don't want to violate their rights. You look back on a lot of my tickets, it was on high run roads that we've gotten a lot of complaints on, and that is, still to this day, is what we respond to a lot of on our traffic complaints. We have roads in town that we have to respond to and enforce the law. But as, if you look and you talk to those individuals and we look down at what the actual content was and everything, you'd have to really break down and say, were they mistreated or were they just upset because of the outcome? So, and I think it was probably the outcome, but not the way that they were always heard.
Might be something you heard before, but if an emergency, if an emergency or a highly sensitive situation occurs, please explain the technique she would employ to keep the county administrator and board of selectmen involved in the situation or informed of the situation. And on a daily basis, would you keep the county administrator informed about projects, problems, and issues?
So on a high-profile situation, first of all, we'd have to make sure whatever it is, the public safety is definitely secured. And once that is established, once public safety is established, then we want to make sure that I reach out, that I would definitely reach out to the town administrator and senior elected officials and say, hey, this is what's going on and what we need to do is we need to come together and we need to be, we need to inform the public, that one, that the public is safe. And we also have to turn around and tell them what, as much as we can, what happened. We have to bring in external stakeholders that are involved, whatever that looks like. And then we have to turn around and say, tell the public, hey, this is what happened, this is where we're going, and then we'll give you more information as much as possible. I've been going, I've been meeting with the town administrator regularly in conversation of things that have happened at the police station that happens, happens around town, whether it's us as a law enforcement agency conducting investigations, or if it's outside agencies coming into Stowe to do their own investigations or to do their own police actions in town. I've kept, I've kept her informed. And before Denise was put in her position, I kept Bill Wrigley informed, I kept the board informed of always what has been going on with inside and outside the police department. So there was no surprises that everybody was informed of everything.
Right. Again, a multi-part question.
What is that?
It's a multi-part question again. What do you think are the most important qualities and characteristics of a chief of police? Do you have those qualities? And would your current and past retired peers agree with those statements?
So most important qualities of a police chief?
Yeah.
And do I have them?
Do you have them? And would other people agree with that statement, basically?
So I would, I would say effective communication is definitely an important quality of any police chief. I think I can, I've demonstrated now that right here, now that I can communicate very well. But you have to be able to communicate that to your subordinates as well. The officers I work with, I communicate and share a lot of information. The information has to be shared, you can't just keep it because it doesn't do anybody any good. I've always been a believer in sharing, of information, sharing information with the town. I've done, you know, a lot of work on social media for the police department to keep the residents updated, but also you have to share information and lead by sharing information with the officers. I would definitely say that I have that quality and that the other, that the police chiefs before me would say that I do that well, too. The other, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, I know what I was going to say. So continuing on, I have done a lot of different roles within the police department. So that shows those officers that I'm not going to ask them to do something that I won't do myself. And the open communication that I'm going to have with them shows that I'm also going to still be effective as a police officer. Because you can't be a chief and not know how your officers are doing or how they're doing their job or what it looks like out on the street. I can't make decisions from behind the desk and turn around and say, I want you to do this, when it doesn't work on the road. You need to be able to talk to your, the people that are doing it because they're the ones who are going to be at the end and the ones representing you. And your leadership as saying, I want you to do this, and if they can't do it out there, then that's poor, poor decision-making from the chief. So if I can, if I can be more involved and know exactly what's happening on the street or have a good idea, then that's going to build trust within my department because they know, oh, he's not making a decision from down the hall, he's making a decision from out the street and he's going to help us do our job.
Can I follow up on my own question or did you have a follow-up? Okay. So Ellen sort of touched on this and I, my other question was, how do you feel like you have evolved as an officer over your career? And what, what makes you feel like that evolution is now equipping you to be the chief? Granted, you've been, the tricky part of all of this, right, is you've been doing this job for a bit. But, you know, what, how do you feel like you've evolved enough to be in a chief role? And how will you sort of? That's, that's my question.
So I think I touched upon this a little bit throughout the morning here. But when I started, again, it was, it was a different policing atmosphere. It was different looking from the outside, from the higher-ups down to me. And what was expected is different now. So the, I said it earlier, you, when you first start out any job, you're learning really how to do it, but you don't really, you get a little bit of the why, but when you really start going on forward, you're like, oh, I understand now. Look up, this, we want to get this accomplished. There are many ways to get it accomplished. As time goes on, or as time has gone on, I think my knowledge base and my confidence as a police officer really has grown. My interactions with so many good people has continues and has continued. And I, and I listen and I like taking advice. I don't have the answer, but you know, someone over here may have a good idea, someone over here may have a good idea, too. And I can take the best of both of those things. And I did that during, during my field training when I was a young officer. I would look at different officers and how they approached something. How did this person do an interview? How did this person interact with the public? And I took what I thought was the best qualities of those individuals. And that's why we make sure now that those officers who are trained sit with all different officers because they can develop their own style. I believe that my, I have really evolved as an officer over the course of 20 years. I am not the same officer, I'm a better officer now. I listen a lot more than I did back when, you know, I first started. Again, though, the matrix that we had was on how we were judged and how we were performing well, is not how I want to be able to look at my officers and say, I want to say, would you help today? That's important. I don't, you know, okay, so we responded to X amount of calls, you know, we wrote this, you know, we responded to traffic complaints, that's important. But would you help today? Let's make sure that that's the focus on, for Stowe, is, you know, and it's not just the residents, it's the guests. We have a lot of people that come into Stowe that really love our community, you know, in the fall time, our population doubles, if not triples, because of the amount of people that come in to take advantage of the great community that we have. So it's not just the residents, it's, you know, our guests, too, that we are, that we have to respond to. And again, my, I have, my policing has changed. I am more confident now and it's, we have all these different programs now that we didn't have when I was a younger officer.
So if you become our permanent police chief, what do you miss? What do you miss or what might you miss already about the position that you've held at other times in the past? So what do you, what do you have to give up as chief? Because I imagine you won't perhaps have time to do all of the, the things that have enriched hope out of you during the process.
So over the past eight, nine months now, I've been responsible for two roles, the active police chief and still as a detective sergeant. So I think the investigative side of things I will miss, but now it gives me a different opportunity to look and really foster that relationship with the officers that are up and coming because I'm going to be able to give more of my experience and knowledge to them or help direct them and say, hey, this, this worked for me, this didn't work for me, you might want to try this. So I'll still have, I won't have say because I trust the officers and they trust me. And so we have to, I give them that discretion that they can make those decisions on their own. But I think that's what I'll miss, is that side of things. But again, I said I want to change what the position looks like. So as far as like going out in the community and still going to all the, all the things that I did before, I'm still going to do that. And if that means doing it on, you know, on a Saturday, then that means doing it on a Saturday. But I'm still going to be out there, you know, I'm not probably going to be writing tickets or anything, but that's, which still happens because you come across things as you're just out there on patrol anyway. But it's going to be more of a mentoring the younger officers. And, and for me, that was, it's going to be great because I love being a teacher, I love that part of my life. And, you know, I did that at the Citizens Academy, you know, we fronted four of those. I want to do it again. I want to be able to still participate in that. And so it's not just, you know, there'll be things that I miss, but, you know, this is part of being, part of growing and part of expanding who you are as a person, so, you know.
Thank you.
Jim? Mike, one of the things that we've all seen, one of the issues that has come up with all the horrible videos we've all seen by officers and black Americans, it's been not just the social justice aspect of the police system. Could you talk to me a little bit about de-escalation, your thoughts about changes, if you think they're necessary in the department's use of force? Tell me about any situations that would de-escalated, that kind of.
So we need to keep our training up, we need to give the officers the most amount of tools. And I, and that means doing, a few of our officers have gone on a crisis intervention training, we need to continue that. There were supposed to be more that were going this year, but due to COVID, those classes were canceled, they're looking at doing online ones. But we're going to continue that. I believe a tool that can be used for de-escalation, which I've seen personally, are cameras. I believe that that is a helpful tool. I believe that I would, that is going to be something, and I probably should have said this, about what the five-year plan looks like, but that would be a capital request that I would be going for and hopefully this board would support me on. I don't think that, there are different avenues, we could do body worn cameras or we could do cameras out in the cruisers, whatever that looks like, that would be a discussion for later on, especially the policy that goes behind it. But I did try that, I did do a trial program for a month, I had a body worn camera. And I'll tell you, when you stop a car and the person is agitated and as soon as you tell them- And I'll tell you, when you stop a car and the person is agitated and as soon as you tell them that they're on video and audio, it really de-escalated the situation quickly and I didn't have to do much. We have a lot of tools that we use in Stowe for our use of force. And officers are trained in the totality of the circumstances of being the use of force continuum. And we respond appropriately. We continue our training all year long. We talk about use of force and we do look at other people's, those videos, those bad videos, and say, "Ooh, that, you know, why did they do that?" That, that, you know, not to Monday morning quarterbacks and people, but sometimes we do. But you look at it and you're like, "I wouldn't have done that, they shouldn't have done that." Or this is a different way of handling, handling that. We do talk about that. We do have a lot of tools, you'll see us when we're out in public, that we do wear. We have, you know, we do have a firearm, we do have a police baton, we have a taser and, you know, pepper spray. We have all those tools. For me, for use of force, the, you know, I, there was an individual in Stowe that I ended up arresting that the, got out of his car and wanted to fight me. And I was in the middle of 117 and we, you know, I did, I took my taser out of my holster, but I did not deploy it. And that was, and using verbal commands and we were able to get that person in custody with no, with no issues. I do have a letter from him apologizing for, you know, putting both of us in that position. So, that, we all have, you know, our use of force situations that we've gone through, but we've been trained and we're going to continue to train. And how do we, how do we make that look better? And what can, and again, having that clinician may be more helpful, too. That could de-escalate a situation, that, less use of force. And why are we using the force, too? Are we getting the person to comply or are we actually getting them to stop a threat? You know, it's a lot different when you're trying to get someone to comply than you are getting them, you know, if they're hurting somebody and you have to use force. Or if they're using deadly force on somebody else and you have to get them to stop. So, you have to have all these options. And I know in policing, and I know I said this a lot in my citizens class there, it depends. But we are well-trained and I believe for our state, too. I've seen some of the training records from other states. We are far above and have more training than other states for initial police academies and continuing on. So, and we have some of the best instructors in the country here in this state.
Mike, can I ask you about the police reform, though, and how you see the newly created posts impacting your position as chief?
So, well, the police officer standard and training are, are going to have a lot of things that need to happen. From an administrative point of view, we need to be able to become certified as a police agency once that happens. Again, I talked about the next step, become accredited. And then, we need to provide all of our records to the post after review. That's all of our personnel records will be going to the state and made public. So, there are some administrative things that have come out, but there's also some things that directly affect us now. And I talked about the duty to intervene. That is definitely one of the things that have come out of that. But we've also, we've already had that in place. I put that in place before it was required. And as I stated before, I've gone above and beyond what the requirements of that. Some of the other things that are in place are reporting for use of force reporting. And I, I believe that if we have a use of force situation in Stowe, that we need to look at what that looked like and why we did it. And did it work and did it not work and what that looks like. And it has to be reviewed by other individuals, too, not just me as a police chief. But it has to be reviewed, again, by the civilian review or whoever we need to, there are, what else is there? So, we already adhere to and have on policy about the chokeholds. We don't do that in Stowe. We don't shoot in moving vehicles. We have those policies in place for a very long time and that is not going to change, obviously. And there are some impacts that, that this reform does, are going to look like at in Stowe. We do, we do utilize reserve officers here, so they're going to have to be brought up to a separate training level because part of this post is to bring every officer up to the same training that, their initial training for their academy. And we're going to have to look at a few people and to get a bridge training, a bridge academy for them.
Thank you.
We're starting to run out of time. Can you do a quick one now?
I don't, I don't have anything to do on that.
We're down, in that case, we're down to our last five minutes. One of the things I was, we missed about at the beginning, I didn't mention that what we're planning on doing is after we finish your interview today, we will be talking about you and the other candidate. And then, we'll be either making a decision today or Tuesday. So, that's kind of the timeline. And really for your last five minutes, we'll let you ask us any questions you have or make any closing comments.
So, I grew up in Stowe. I started my career here. I plan on ending my career here. I love this community. And I know, when talking to people, I know what it means when they say, "I'm from Stowe." I know that the love that they have, that they share the same love that I have for this town. I want to be able to lead us into the next phase of policing and say, "Hey, I was part of this. This is a great change and this is where I was able to participate in this change that we have coming up for policing." So, I think I am, I know I'm the best candidate for this job. I've been doing this job for nine months, or eight months, and I'm ready just to continue on and making the changes that we need to make together. So, if you, so now my question to you guys, is there anything that I've said, is there anything that I've said or you heard me say that really intrigues you or concerns you?
Oh, you're going to make a call.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were.
Oh, no, no, no. I just, I just moved my paper.
I was just going for my mask. I'll, I'll start it. The only thing was, at the beginning, you indicated that you were going to bring a different approach to chief. You know, and then you, you were no one, the community office used to be delegated to you by other chiefs. You think that the chief, him or herself, should be the one going to do it. I'm reinterpreting what you said.
Okay.
But that's what I took from it, which is fine. I'm sure you didn't mean to imply that you're not going to have the other officers doing community evaluation. Oh, absolutely not. So, that do, it would be, "Let's go, let's go do this together. Let's turn around and we're going to, you know, I, I have these relationships, you're going to have the relationships. Now, we're going to be doing this together. Let's go all up." Because it's not just me. I can't do this alone. I'm not the police department. It's all of us together. We all need to go together and do these things together, absolutely. No, I did not mean I was going to be doing it by myself.
Jim, I actually took that as, you know, when he mentioned it originally, that he was going to be bringing the other officers along, using the skills and things that he's learned over the years. And maybe even when people considered him a bit of a hard butt years ago, maybe he'll temper some of the newer officers with his experience that, you know, times have changed. So, it's, I, I, I think that, you know, taking us into the future is what intrigued me. And thank you. Anybody else?
Tom Courtney.
Courtney?
Me, too. I'll say it a slightly different way. I felt you sort of alluded to maybe being asked for statistical results in the past. And then you've spoken in a variety of ways of, about introducing the policies and, you know, kind of, kind of listening also for what was needed. So, could you just characterize that in a sentence or two and say, you know, what was, what was then and what is now? And does that make sense? Like, speak to a previous culture as opposed to the current culture?
So, so, the previous culture was all about numbers and not about, too much about the effect that those numbers had on the community. And it really should be about how, how we do our job affects the community and how we can help those individuals. And to change the culture of what we have at the police station now has to really, you have to have the trust and the support of the officers, for me, and I have to trust and support them. And become, because I already have that established trust over the course of 20 years, they've seen what I've done and they've seen what I can do and they want to be part of that, I'm going to be able to change that culture. I'm going to be able to change that metrics of how we think as a police department and we'd be able to be more effective police department and help more individuals.
I will just say, I appreciate your statement about being a mentor to the officers. I feel like that is, that is something that is going to be important. And I also think difficult for you, right? Because it's going to be hard, even though you've been doing this job for this amount of time, to really be stepping into that more permanent role where you're not, I've been in jobs before, right, where you become the manager and you've been their coworker. And then, all of a sudden, you're the one who's really, the buck stops with me. So, I think it's going to be important and, and I didn't, I liked, I appreciated that answer about being a mentor to the other officers and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that really did stick out to me that you said is, "Who did you help today?" It wasn't, you know, and I'm just going to leave it at that, but I appreciate that, too. Because it's what I think the police department and public service should be about. And in fact, I think we're kind of out of time.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. Hey, everybody. Thank you so much.
And we're finally going to pronounce your name right because you said Salisi.
I did say Salisi.
Denise has picked up on this and it's the first time I heard that. Like, have we been pronouncing it wrong all these years? You have. My apologies. I'm going to remember that.
Don't worry. I think well over 10 years and I had to ask them a couple of months ago.
Thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Mike.
So, we are now down to the last phase. I think we've had, personally, I think we had a very good interview. And I think what I'll do is kind of just go around in circles and, you know, see what people have to, have to say. And we can then, you know, see where we're going from there. And since we started with you before. Unless you'd like me to start somewhere else?
Um, no, I would like to start only just because I have, and you have and Denise has, but had multiple interviews now. And I will say that, so, two things. One, I'd like a couple of days to chew this over. I don't want, I'm not in favor of voting today just because I do think it's important for us to get community, just community input. People have been watching this. This is a big deal. And I'd like just to be able to solicit any community input before our Tuesday meeting. I will say this because both of the interviews were a different tenor than the previous interviews and in a positive way. And I, for that reason, personally, would just like to be able to chew over kind of what the answers were, what the feeling was. I do agree with Tom. I think they were two very good, solid interviews. And I don't know that I would have said that the last time. I think there were probably some nerves involved that I feel like had been worked out by this time. So, yeah, that's my two cents.
Courtney?
I would agree. I'd love some time to think this over. I felt like there were two solid interviews. I won't say more about that. Is there a specific mechanism by which the public can interact with us if they've been watching and would like to comment? That was the thought I had when you mentioned it.
My assumption would be they would just email the selectmen's office and, but is that not?
Yeah, I mean.
Would that be the most, the best way to do it? And then you can just collect it and just give you some more work, but.
No, no.
You would compile them all and send them to us?
Right. I mean, it's similar to what happened. I mean, you received a number of letters on behalf of candidates.
Yep.
So, folks could either, it's probably easier to just email me at the town administrator email address, so townadministrator@stowe-ma.gov, just because the selectman email address is only monitored part-time.
Okay.
So, it's easier. I could just put them all together, consolidate them, print them out, forward them along before Tuesday's meeting.
Great.
Can we ask folks if we're going to do that, to do it by end of day Monday? So, we're not spending time at the Tuesday evening going through it for the first time.
Oh, I would even say end of day Sunday. I mean, if people are watching it now, they have the weekend to do it. And then, that gives us Monday time, it gives Denise time to put it together and then it gives us time to go through it and really be thoughtful. I just, I want to be as thoughtful in this process as possible and as I'm sure you all do, so.
I agree with what my two colleagues said. I would prefer to wait till, until Tuesday and organize my thoughts. I am pleased, though, that even though one candidate dropped out and we only have two finalists, I do feel ready to make a decision once I gather my thoughts on it. I'll just look at that. Any comments, Brittany?
No, I don't have any comments. But I'm not ready to, I would like to wait and see what feedback we get and make a recommendation for my part on Tuesday.
Ellen?
Yeah, I mean, I want to echo what Jim just said. I, I was really concerned, actually, when we lost the one candidate who I thought was very strong and, and I was super disappointed. But after these two, today, I actually feel like, I mean, I was almost ready to say, "Maybe we should, we consider reopening the search just based on that change." But I think that we have two really good candidates and I'm definitely not ready to make a decision, so.
I feel like I'd be willing to make a decision, but I'm, I will not say what that decision is at this point. And I will defer to my colleagues. I seem a little humbled, anyway, so I might as well go along with it. And that faces there. Any more discussion anybody would like to have today?
No, but if I just may reiterate, so we are going to meet in this building on Tuesday. It has been updated on our website. We are still close to the public, however, but access will be available through Stowe TV and Stowe, so.
So, if that's, if that's the case, if somebody would like to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Stowe TV.